So Andrea, look, this is probably set up right. This goes across. Right here? Yeah, does this one? Yeah. These are everybody, anybody? Did you put the?
Should we be?
Are you adding them?
Yeah.
Yeah. These are the dead. Interesting. Okay. One more minute? I just want to get some more people.
Mama, how we doing?
Hi, Paul. Good. How you doing? Good.
Do we have any? No.
Yeah. So yeah, they're on. It was pretty specific.
I'm gonna give it to you.
Okay, so this. This will be for two minutes. Seven o'clock. You sped finish? Okay. So welcome, everybody, to the town of Unionville Town Hearing, public hearing, December 21st. I hope everybody has an agenda. If you don't, I'm sure there's more at the door. Public hearings will officially open this one, open and close by a gavel. We don't have any other procedure for doing them in the state of New York. We're gonna have our regularly scheduled town board agenda meeting immediately following the close of this public hearing. Feel free to stay if you'd like. But we thank you for being here. The first thing I wanted to do this evening is introduce you to everybody's here. Sounds like it's echoing a bit. I hope I. Okay. First of all, we have the town board members, and I'm gonna start on the right. We have Councilman Kevin McGivney, Councilman Perry Gusekov, Councilman John Welsh, Councilman Kevin Durland, Planning Board Chair Pat Cartlemme, I'm Betsy Moss, Town Supervisor, George Cole, Head of our Building Department, Alan Machef, Planning Board Member, Tom Harvey, our Town Engineer, Ed Kating, our Highway Superintendent, and Jeff Battistoni, our Town Attorney. So all of the people up here are somewhat involved, one way or the other, in this process, and would enjoy entertaining any questions, okay? Now, the first thing, the goal of this public hearing really is to get some, the board, town board would like to hear some insight from all of you as to what your, we just wanna hear what your thoughts are about the proposed changes to the Town Center Zone or TC District, which you saw, I'm sure all the material you may have seen on the website. So we're anxious to hear what you all have to say and any comments you have. First of all, though, I have to take care of some business, and that is to let you know that this public hearing was officially announced at our November 21st meeting. And we also, during that time, printed out and read out loud the Notice of Public Hearing, and I'm gonna ask our clerk, Casey, to please read that and repeat that to everybody here.
On December 21st, 2022, at seven o'clock PM, the day and time, on proposed Local Law Number Four of 2022, of the time, Unionville, Letches County, New York, being a local law amending Town Code, Chapter 192, entitled Subdivision of Land, and Chapter 210, entitled Zoning, updating all street specifications and common brag rights and private room permit in the town, and Chapter 128, entitled Fee Land Use relating to the calculation and payment of recreation fees. And this was published in the Inte Journal on November 28th, 2022.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, now, as far as the impetus and the reason we're here tonight is because there have been a lot of things going on in the Town Center Zone, and a lot of this you may not know about, but I thought it would be helpful for you to have a little bit of background. And then we're gonna have our expert, our town planner, a professional named Nan Stoltenberg, is gonna speak and give you an overview of what we've been working on here. But one of the things that a lot of people might not realize, or maybe you do, because some people have certainly commented to people, myself and others on the board, and that is, when you think about our Town Center Zone, it's really focused on along Route 55. And we've had some, several landowners, people that own parcels along 55 in the town of Unionville, that haven't done anything with that land for many years. We have one gentleman who I've talked to once a year, who's owned the property for over 30 years and still hasn't done anything, and because he found that our town code was very frustrating. So when we went back and looked, you might say, you know, how, what's been going on in our Town Center Zone? How buildable is it? What kind of activity is going on? And if you look at the COs or the Certificates of Occupancy, the COs, the way that it's been working there, there's been a pretty much a lack of building. We issued our town under George Cole, was issued a CO in 2020. That was for our solar development. Prior to that, there was a CO issued in 2004. Then there, prior to that, 1999. And prior to that, it was 1985. So since 1985, we have issued four Certificates of Occupancy in our Town Center Zone. Now, in 2001, when the town wrote the master plan, and they had a wonderful group of people that got together and put together this master plan, one of the focuses of the master plan was buildability along Route 55 and trying to provide a place where the town could actually earn some commercial tax revenue, because, as you know, we don't really have many commercial entities in the town. So that was identified in our master plan as a place to have commercial revenue come from, have higher density, maybe more houses because of a state road ran right through it. And it really hasn't come to fruition. And I think now, I've been sitting in the supervisor's chair, this is for five years, and there was a regular stream of complaints. If I were working late and the planning board was going in, if I wasn't in here and I was working in my office, applicants would leave the planning board and walk into my office and say, your code is impossible. And I didn't focus so much on the code, because as Pat Cartlemme and then our former chair, Kevin Durland, didn't know the code very well, as does George Cole and Ellen. I didn't focus on it for a couple of years, until the complaints grew and grew, and people said the setbacks were terrible, the restrictions were bad. We had a planned mixed-use development aspect where there was a menu of things you could pick from. The menu of things that were on our code, and this is a layman's term, you guys can talk technical later, but the menu of things that were on our code were not attractive to Unionville. They wouldn't have been attractive in 2001, they're certainly not attractive today. And they were all for very large office parks, shopping centers, big things that everybody in Unionville who moves here says, I love the rural nature of this town, and we wanna keep the rural nature of the town. And our code for that section of town didn't comply with that. So what the lucky part about it was, it made it really impossible for people to build here. And so they didn't build here. And had they built here, it wouldn't have been consistent with our rural nature. And I think it would look more like surrounding towns. Now, all these many years later, since our code was first written, La Grange has been built up. I think they had good intent when they first wrote the code, because the intention was to get the services to the people of Unionville that they needed. But 25 years later, 30 years later, La Grange has them, Beekman has them. We're close to all of that, and we still wanna be rural and attractive with open space. We wanna be Unionville. So when people that own property came in to the planning board, and the planning board became frustrated, what happened was, after we all knew that there were complaints, the planning board approached the town board and said, we need your help. We need to make changes to the code. There are, there are landowners out there that have very good intentions and good ideas, and we can't make it happen, because the code has too many restrictions. So last spring, we took up that task and said, okay, let's look at it. It's a very tedious thing to try to change the code, because there are a lot of details to it. So we decided, we jumped into it with a working group comprised of everybody at this end of the table, two planning board members and two town board members. So this working group has been working for quite a long time. We hired a professional, Nan Stoltenberg is a professional planner, and she comes from upstate. I believe she can tell us that her family, her family owns a farm. She may even live on a farm, and she's completely in sync with our desire to be different than our neighbors and to stay rural. So what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna ask our professional, who can speak very eloquently about what our intentions are and what we wanna do here, and that is Nan Stoltenberg. And Nan is on. Nan is on Zoom. She's upstate. Do you see her? Oh, there she is. Okay, so Nan, I'm gonna turn it over to you. And I hope you're unmuted. Yep, we are. That's great. Introduce Nan Stoltenberg. I'll turn it over.
Okay. Hopefully, everyone, can you hear me okay? Yes, okay, great. So Betsy asked me to just give a little overview of summarizing the highlights of the changes that are being proposed to the zoning. To add to the process, I do wanna say that one of the first things that I was asked to do was to do what we call a zoning audit, which basically compares the policies and direction you, as a town, have established in your comprehensive plan or your master plan to what your zoning actually says. So that tie between the master plan and the zoning is very important, because the zoning is simply a tool to implement the direction and the hopes and dreams and desires of the community that you set in that document as policy. So the first thing that I did was this audit that did that comparison. And through that audit, I think the working group, we discussed a lot of the challenges, as Betsy had talked about, with some pretty difficult sections of the zoning that weren't really working for you, and that weren't really, that if they were working, I don't think that were consistent with the master plan or the desires of the community. So with the kind of marching orders to, to relook at the zoning and its components, which includes the map and the use table and the dimensions, all of the things that go along with the development standards, I made recommendations on some ways that it could be improved. And then the working group and I worked on it over these last several months to bring it to where it's at now, is the draft with the recommendations. So I just, that's a little bit of background. So I think it's really important for the community to realize and to put this into context of that the master plan is a really important document. And it very clearly talks about the desire of the town to remain rural, to remain, to maintain your rural character, to maintain your environmental features and have a clean environment, and not be like every other place. So what we've tried to do is come up with zoning changes that would implement those kind of foundational goals. So I'm just gonna go through kind of a little list of what those highlights are, and then, you know, we can talk if you have questions or comments about any of them. We'd love to hear it. So on the zoning side, the first place we always start in zoning is the purpose statement. So the purpose, why do we have a TC zone? What is it supposed to be doing for the town? So we clarified that to match what the expectations from the master plan are. You'll see that the definition section has been updated, new definitions added, some definitions that were in there amended to make sure that the language that the zoning uses, that everybody, the planning board, the applicants, the code enforcement officer, everybody is using the same set of definitions. So some of the other things that I think are important, we added a density bonus option in the TC District, and the density bonus is basically a, an incentive program that is, towns are authorized to do through New York State Town Law. And the density bonus is allow, is designed to say, okay, developer or landowner, if you offer the town some sort of desired amenity, we will incentivize that by offering a little bit of extra residential density in return. So the density bonuses in Unionville are designed for things like encouraging low-impact development, which is low-impact stormwater development, solar-integrated buildings, lead-energy-resiliency buildings, electric charging stations, more trails and pathways, even forest and wildlife management plans on any woodlands that might be there. So it picks up some of the values and goals of the town and incentivizes that. So the density bonus is not just a free-for-all. An applicant would have to apply for them and would have to show that the parcel is eligible and has the capacity for that extra density. So there's a process that needs to be going through, to be gone through. It's not an automatic thing. It's a voluntary thing that, that's there as, there's usually not that many incentives in zoning, but this is one of them. We also, I think, a big enhancement to the zoning is the addition of design standards for the TC District. And those are development standards for commercial uses. Those would be commercial uses that would also include multifamily dwelling structures, townhouses, and mixed-use buildings. And the design standards are really important so that you get quality siting that benefits the environment, that you have sidewalks, that you have architecturally-designed buildings, or I should say, buildings that are, have an architectural design that is in fitting and a character with you, with your community character. So there's a whole new attachment that is with the zoning that goes over what those design standards are. And then there's, you'll see in the text of the zoning law, places where we refer to those design standards. We've updated the parking lot requirements, because parking lots in a commercial area are really important, and they can make or break the aesthetics. Certainly, they have environmental impacts, but they have a lot of character impacts. And what we wanna avoid is big seas of parking lot and big seas of asphalt between your main road and wherever the buildings are. So that made us need to change some of the setbacks, some of the rules, making sure parking lots have screening, good lighting, and landscaping that fit in a rural area, following dark-skies compliant lighting and things like that, that are very, much more environmentally and character-oriented. Another big area that we added was a technique called a conservation subdivision. You have had in your zoning something called a conservation density subdivision, which, to be honest, was kind of complex and didn't really, I don't think, was really taken advantage of or going to get you where you needed to do. So we have now added in the conservation subdivision method for all major subdivisions, which would be, I think, five, a lot that would be split into five parcels or more. And it's a siting technique. It doesn't change the density of how many dwelling units a person would be eligible for, but it is a much more environmentally-conscious way of developing a subdivision so that there's reserved open space at all times that take place with this. So the process of a conservation subdivision looks at the features of the parcel, and you design around those features of the parcel, rather than most conventional subdivisions simply take the parcel and split it up into however many lots they're eligible for. So the conservation subdivision is, was added for the TC District, but all major subdivisions in the town would go through the conservation subdivision process, design process. Again, it's what we call density neutral, doesn't change how many dwellings you would be eligible for. That's based on whatever zoning district you're in. But I think the conservation subdivision method is really a great, one of the few tools we have in rural communities where you can have your cake and eat it too. You can have the development, but it can be done in a much more smart, environmentally sound, sensitive manner to hopefully meet the goals of the community. We also, another major area was that the planned mixed-use development area, which Betsy was talking about, where you had, you have 30% of the buildings non-residential, and you had to pick from a list of things to have in the commercial part of that. Very cumbersome, very difficult. The planning board had a lot of complaints about it, and that was decided that that was just going to be deleted. So that whole technique has been deleted and replaced with other kinds of standards to allow for mixed-use development. We still want a mix of residence and commercial there, but not through that plan development process, which was very, as I said, very complex. We've added an opportunity for townhouses in the TC District. We've added in some design development standards for multifamily, small, to allow for small multifamily buildings. We're not looking for huge apartment complexes, but smaller buildings that would fit in the rural setting of Unionville. We've added in, through the text and the design standards, more pedestrian-friendly features so that within development that might go there, and then eventually to create more of a hamlet kind of situation to connect with sidewalks and pedestrian opportunities. We deleted some of those big things that Betsy was talking about, the shopping centers, the office park, the convention center. Those are things that just really weren't consistent with what your master plan said about that area. So we've really tried to key this towards mixed uses, the kind of residential development you desire in the town, small business development in a, you know, in a, an atmosphere that would, over time, hopefully, develop more hamlet, more of a hamlet-like situation in that location. We also updated the special use process and the site plan submission so that when someone comes with an application, the planning board has all of the maps, all of the information that they need to make good decisions, and to give them authority to do things like a traffic impact analysis or a visual analysis. So the planning board could know more about what the impacts of that development would be like. The use table that is an important part of the zoning that outlines the uses that are allowed, as I mentioned, it allows for mixed use, which would be residential and a commercial in one building, or a mix of commercial and residential in a development. Let's see, what else would be? So there's some changes to the use table that were designed to home in on the kinds of residential and non-residential uses that the working group in the comprehensive, or I keep calling it the comprehensive master plan, were really envisioned for that location in town. Going along with, so the, the use table tells us what is permitted, and then the other table that's in the zoning is the dimensions, it tells us how big, how much. And that was also adjusted to reflect the smaller, more hamlet-like development that the town is looking for, that are more consistent with the rural character. So if you look at your hamlet, or any hamlet, or any village, the changes are, they're smaller lots, the buildings are closer to the road, there's sidewalks, the parking lots are not the big thing that you see in there. So it's a denser development. So the dimensions table reflects those changes, such as decreasing the amount of lot frontage that you need on Route 55, so it's not like these spread-out suburban-style sprawling commercial looks. We decrease the setbacks, so the buildings could be closer together, more hamlet-like. We increase the lot coverage, because we want it to be more dense. And the hamlets and villages in those kinds of areas are more dense. But at the same time, we, and this is a very important one, the dimensions limit the individual commercial building to 2,500 square feet or 4,000 square feet for a food or grocery use. So the building sizes are much smaller, geared towards local small businesses and not big, you know, certainly not warehouses or those, you know, bigger, more intense uses. It does still require 15% of the development to be a non-residential commercial use mixed in with, with the residents. So those are some highlights of the dimensions table. And those are, again, these are changes for the TC District, not for other commercial districts. The committee worked parcel by parcel on fine-tuning the map, so that you will see some map changes in the, in terms of the size and the breadth of the TC District. And let's see, I talked about the design standards. What did I miss in my highlights here? We did make a couple little changes to the street, the highway specifications. They were technical, more like changing the pipe and the culvert specifications. And there was a change to the fee schedule. The fee schedule that the town currently has, has a dollar amount set for a recreation fee. And it's always my advice to not have the dollar amount of any fee set in a local law, because anytime you need to change that dollar fee or that dollar amount, you have to go back and change the law. Most communities set that up on an annual basis, that it's really just a resolution of the board that sets the fees for the year. So the recreation fee was updated so that the dollar amount for that was taken out and referred to the annual decision that the town board would make on what that fee would be. So that is like a really quick overview of what I think are the major highlights. And just to let you know, we are tweaking it a little bit to fix some typos and some clarification that have come to our attention, that we will, will be working to finalize those. Those aren't policy changes, they're just more readability and consistency kind of changes. So I'll turn it back over to you, Betsy, and I'll be glad to answer any questions as you might need.
Great, thank you, Nan. We appreciate it. Does anybody else wanna offer any insight to anything? Just wait and respond to questions? Okay, that'd be great. All right, as far as the general rules of procedure, you probably all know this, but the speakers have all signed in. Wait if you can hand me that list. The speakers have all signed in at the beginning of the hearing, and I think on Zoom, they contacted the town clerk, they wanted to speak. Speakers will introduce themselves. You come on up, there's a microphone, if you don't mind, if you can make it through the crowd. Come on up and introduce yourself, tell us what state you live on, or what town, if you're not familiar. And then this is just for the record, speakers are permitted three minutes each. If you wanna go on further, if a councilman wants to hear more, they'll ask, ask me to, you know, allow you to speak more, that's the general rule. No one concede their time to another speaker. Speakers will be given a 20-second warning for a wrap-up. And if a board member wishes to hear more, they will ask, as I mentioned. And all the, the board requests that all your comments are made to the board. They're not, you know, we're not, it's not an entertainment, as you know. We need to hear what you're saying. So when you go up to the microphone, please address all your comments to us so we can hear you. And we have a lot of people here that have been involved that can answer questions that you might have and respond to some of your thoughts, okay? So we'll start with the list, and then we'll vote for folks that may have come in and would like to, would like to add your comments, because we'd like everybody to be heard tonight, okay? So first off, we have Vicky Pittman. She's on Zoom. Are you here now? Oh, nice, Vicky. You wanna step on up? Come on up to the microphone. You know, we don't, we only have, the county sent us, we have these from the county, but no, we didn't plan on putting. but no, we didn't plan on putting them up on the map. Would you like to look at this?
Betsy, if you like, I can, I can share my screen and put the map up.
Okay, that'd be great. We haven't gotten it yet.
I have to, you have to enable me to share my screen.
Hang on, um. Okay, wait a minute, Nan. I have to, um. Yeah, we'll just make you co-host. I, I don't wanna cut out Jesse in the back, but, um, we'll find out. It worked? Okay, so you can go ahead and share your screen now as co-host. See the brown area at the back, bottom, bottom left? That's the town center zone. Yeah, Beakman to LaGrange. I mean, you know where, you know where BY is. The town line, our town line. You'll see the signs. Welcome to Beakman, welcome to Unionville. To, uh, almost, to LaGrange, as you know, we're, um, past Wisman.
Just past Wisman Road.
The town center zone, I think one of the things that, I, I, I didn't hear Nan say it, but I may have been distracted by this. The, um, you know, we're focusing on everything along Route fifty-five. And we did, um, remove parcels from the town center zone that were residential and were off of fifty-five. Anything along fifty-five is in the town center zone. We did not take the school district out of town center zone. Um, you know, we're, I'm sure the school district will always be there, but one day, you never know. If they sold it, that would, would be more of a commercial location for something as well. So it looks large, but all that on the left side is, a lot of that's the school. So. Okay. Vicky, did you wanna share a comment? We'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, I really don't like being the first speaker here, but, uh, here goes. Um, I, I, Vicky Pittman, I live at nineteen-twelve Brusco Road. This is right in my backyard. Um, most of the people that live in the town of Unionville probably avoid the intersection open there already because uh, with the school, it's, it's very busy. Um, I lived where I live now for fifteen years. Before that, I lived over here, just across the street, for ten years. And I never went that way because of the traffic. Once I had to go to Kipsey or whatever. The, um, is it okay? Yeah. Yeah. I like being the guinea pig up here. Is that better? Uh, and anyway, um, the, I looked at the, the zoning map and the changes in it and, um, I, I lost sleep before I found that map and, and I said, oh, okay. Um, they're, they've changed some of the area to, uh, um, where I could sleep. So the zone, the changes in the zoning map, I, I personally approve of. I, I'm happier with it because the town center was just out my back door. Um, so I was real uncomfortable with that. The, um, the, the reason that I came in here, I just had my second surgery on my foot. I wanted to be at home. I don't wanna come here, um, really, but I felt very strongly that, um, you know, when I was looking through the, the paperwork that was posted on the website and trying to pretend like I knew what, what everything was and what it meant and everything, um, it started to become apparent to me that, that it's not commercial, that it's residential that is planning on going in there. And that truly concerns me a great deal. You know, you talk about the, the, the nature of the community and I guess because it's in my backyard, it really concerns me a great deal. And I, and like I said, I know most people who live in Unionville probably don't even go that way. Um, having all the, the new development, um, you know, I saw like apartments, townhomes, like, you know, a half an acre, this, that. It, it was, uh, confusing to me and I, and I won't pretend like, um, I really tried really hard to understand it. I, I did. Um, I just, I just think it's December twenty-first. It's a, it's a, oh, sorry. It's, it's the, uh, you know, it's the busiest time of the year. This is a very big decision. Um, and I really wish that, that all of you would consider that and, um, maybe give it a little bit more time before you start making these changes. That will impact me directly in my backyard.
Thank you. Yvonne Shizeng?
I've never done this before. Um, I am not a taxpayer, but I am speaking on behalf of someone that I cohabitate that is. Um, I'm not for growth at all, so um, you're opening a can of worms and you're throwing rocks through people's windows. That's what it's like. We're in a recession, so they keep saying, oh, we're gonna go down to two percent and it's gonna happen. Well, it's not gonna happen. So if you're putting up developments and there's no demand for rent, or the rent's too high, they can't afford it. Uh, what, what's gonna happen? Yeah, I, it's not a good time. The economy's contracting. And here we are, or here, the planning board is developing. It doesn't make fiscal logistical sense to me. So anyway, I'm gonna read this. It's a quote from TSLU. Half the harm that is done in this world is due to people who wanna feel important. You don't need to do harm. So harm of what they do is no interest. They don't see it, or for whatever reason, they justify it. Because they are all absorbed in the end for the struggle they well. I've got one minute, I don't wanna say, um. Yeah, I just, uh, you guys all know there's a library going in and, oh, I just wanna say, I read the budget and it was interesting. The first page was nothing about, wasn't itemized. It wasn't anything about what you've been paying for this year. The rest of it was all about this plan for this building, for this project you wanted to. So who's paying for that? There's what, a thousand homes here? These are the taxpayers that are the basis for the community. There's four hundred of them that are four thousand dollars. So those are the people you're relying on to pay for this plan that you're gonna put into effect. And then you have the library that's coming up and that's not adjusted for inflation. There's been a price on that, so. I don't know. I don't see this as a, I think there should be a stay. I think there should be a, I think it's only law two thousand, two-ten. I think there should just be a moratorium on that for a while. See how the library does, get that all paid for and then see how the economy fares out. Okay, the inflation rate goes down and then put all this into place. I think by doing this, it's like, you're doing this during recession, we all know. Prices are doubled, gasoline is doubled. You're gonna have people coming in. You're gonna have the contractors building. They got mortgage rates that are like, what, double than what they usually pay? And what, that's not gonna affect taxpayers? So I think you're opening up a can of worms. I don't think it's a good time. Right down, that's saying it's a good idea. I just don't think it's appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, so I mean, just it's, it's important that everybody keeps in mind that this is, it is residential with a fifteen percent minimum requirement of whatever the square footage is for the residential of fifteen percent square footage of commercial would be required. Um, did I say that right? Did I say residential first? Um, but it's also important for everybody to understand is that the, um, there are landowners. There are people that have property rights. There are people that may want to sit on the property for another ten years and wait for the inflation pass or people that may wanna build. Now, it's totally up to them. The town is, it's not our business to tell them when to build and when not to build. We're, we're just trying to look out and be consistent with our master plan, make things easier and more consistent with what the town wants. What they decide to do and when they decide to do it is totally up to them. It's not the town. So they will. Well, we, by law, we have to. We only, uh, the moratorium expires on January third. So we.
You could, you could vote to keep that in place.
But there's, okay, we're not gonna, we have to finish the moratorium. We have to make these decisions. We have to allow people to make their own. They have rights as landowners. We have to let them make their decisions. And what we're trying to do is just make it more consistent with what the town really wants. You might not hear from these landowners. You may hear from them right away. We don't know. But I, I, I guess the point is, is that it hasn't been buildable i- i- in thirty years and some people may wanna build and it should be up to them. It's not up to us to tell them. So that's what we're all about, is letting them come to us, but do it in an environmentally safe, more attractive rural way. That's what this is all about. Okay?
One of the other points is that building and especially commercial building increases the tax revenue in the town. So to go towards the other point that was brought up, it's more tax revenue and it takes it off of the residents that are in the town. So building commercial businesses out will actually help the tax base and make it more affordable.
Yvonne, Yvonne, please, Yvonne. Maybe no talking back, if you don't mind. We're, we're happy to respond and give you some information, but it's, it's not a, it's. Okay, thank you very much. All right, who's up next? Susan Kayvey? Would you mind coming to the podium? We'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Kayvey. Um, I live on South Cross Road in LaGrange for the past thirty-five years. Um, what concerns me are a couple of things. One is that, of course, you have this meeting at the very end of December, near the holiday time and I, even though this room is very full, I think you probably could have had twice as many people here had it not been this particular week. Um, so that's something to consider for the future. Uh, I also think that my concern, just to answer the other, the prior person's, um, comments, is that what I found in the town of LaGrange, even if we have a, uh, a code that, you know, very inviting for developers, they're not gonna develop unless the conditions are right for them. So if the conditions aren't right, then they're not gonna develop here in Unionville either, utilities. Uh, but to another point is, of course, the roads. Um, and it's not so much the maintenance of the roads, it's the traffic on the roads. Uh, I really feel, you know, on South Cross Road, you all know that this is a throughway between, literally a throughway, between, um, twenty-one and eighty-two and fifty-five. And when we moved here thirty-five years ago, I tell the story, we couldn't have a lemonade stand because there was only one car on the road. Today, thirty-five years later, we still can't have a lemonade stand, even though there are probably thousands of cars who come through because they're all going sixty miles an hour, even though it's a thirty mile an hour zone. And I was responsible for getting the stop signs put into South Cross Road. They're not that helpful, but at least there's something. Um, so my concern is, what are we gonna do with twenty-one? What are we gonna do with South Cross Road? Um, when people are trying to move through? Cause this is now right there. Uh, so my concern is really South Cross and twenty-one and the increased traffic. And, um, there are accidents, I'm sure you all know, on, um, fifty-five and, uh, South Cross all the time. It's a terrible, terrible spot. Uh, you know, getting in and out now, again, thirty-five years later, we have to wait five or ten minutes. Now, I don't wanna traffic, mind you. Um, but this is crazy. So my, my thought is maybe to having some conditions about turning onto South Cross Road. Um, the same way that Camp Hillcroft, you know, you cannot turn on certain roads and driveways in order to get your kids to camp. So is there anything like that in consideration, um, for some of these roads that are literally now throughways, not just through roads, throughways?
Thirty seconds.
But, um, the short answer is not yet. I mean, we, we've been more concerned about the South Parliament, Brusco Road, you know, that circle that, that place that was the circle, really. We've been, um, our focus is a little bit then on what happens there and getting the state to work with us. Having the county, cause there's a county road there and a town road and a state road. Having the county work with the, and the state work with us on slowly helping to slow the traffic down and make that better on, on that intersection. Since LaGrange has jurisdiction over South Cross, um, it would probably be something we could get into a conversation with them on when something, when we get an application and somebody actually, uh, suggests they're gonna build. It's a little premature, but when it does happen, I think we could probably talk to LaGrange and there are things that people can do. Um, I don't know, Ed, Ed's been successful at helping us slow some traffic down in Unionville. Um, they are, um, not as, not every road and not every neighborhood we know, but, um, there are things that can be done and we can certainly have a discussion with Alan Bell and the people in LaGrange about that. We, we appreciate that.
No, I, I'd appreciate that too. And Ed, you could always come to fifty-five and South Cross and, and be our police person there, okay? And not, only let, only let me and Tori, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, um.
Should we just, just so everybody knows, I think, that I think the scope of the entire district fully built is not nearly like what is maybe being represented or, or thought. That at, at its max, if every single thing was built out, uh, every lot was built out, I think there may be a hundred and fifty homes, we figure, something like that, maybe. And that's if everybody maximized everything. So I don't think the traffic necessarily on fifty-five, which is a state road, which we don't control, they'll have input on any development that goes in. Um, but we don't necessarily control fifty-five at all. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm not disputing that, but there's, there's probably.
Yeah, no, you're right. And I was gonna say that the county, and then the county, uh, we've been working closely with Dutchess County on this and what they've said to us, they're urging us to get, that should be our higher density area because they're looking at the traffic studies and they say the, the traffic studies on Route fifty-five in our area, they said have hardly moved in twenty years. He says that they, 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 they know the numbers. They do the traffic counts all the time. And they said if any place, there isn't any other place in Unionville where we want higher density, that is the only place. Because, um, according to Dutchess County, they feel very comfortable in handling that along Route fifty-five. And, and so, you know, that's another positive. So it's, you know, the, the county is kind of urging us to feel comfortable with that.
One of the biggest problems is without showing that there's a problem, it can't be fixed. So with the current, the way, the current way that it's situated, there'll never be a change unless there is more development built out. So unless we give them the traffic count and see that there is an increase, that's the only way changes will actually be made on the road. And unfortunately, how dangerous it seems to us, it doesn't seem dangerous to the state because unfortunately, there's not enough accidents when the state looks at it. So that's where it comes into as being an issue with it.
I know, terrible. But you know, it, it, part of a past, Carl, let me talk about is the intersection that I refer to, the Brusco, South Parliament. And, um, there haven't been enough, cause we've been in touch with the state. It's more down there. You've actually had a few more, right? It's terrible, but, um, maybe we shift their attention to your street, your intersections. Cause they're not looking at ours, but we're gonna try to coax them, uh, as this moves forward, if it does over the next few years.
Well, I just wanna gauge it for you to be that way.
Ask one of these guys to build one across the street. Come to, come to Unionville, maybe. Okay, um, next up is, um, is that Victoria Close? You passed? Okay. Vicky Pittman again? Oh, you moved yourself to the fifth place, Vicky. I didn't see you down there. I'm sorry. Sorry, your name is at the top. Sorry. All right. Um, Joanne and Larry Knapp?
Would you like to come on up? Hi, I'm Joanne Knapp. I have, um, property on fifty-five and South Parliament and I run an equestrian center from the South Parliament driveway. And like the other speaker, the biggest concern that I have regarding this whole thing would be the traffic because for me, coming in and out with a horse trailer, that intersection is so dangerous for me if I'm coming, um, west on fifty-five than to turn to get to South Parliament Road. Nobody stops coming down Brusco, nobody. I've been hit twice. I've been rear-ended twice leaving South Parliament because I inch out to see if anybody's coming out when the light that's over there turns green and when the car starts coming down and I stop, the car behind me hits me. So it's an absolutely dangerous intersection. Um, it's not good for my business because nobody wants to come in that way. And then MapQuest, for whatever reason, sends everybody through Cunningham's and they come in that way and then they turn on that driveway, which isn't nice to the people of the Cunningham Development. And then to say that there's not been residential increase, I've been there. And then to say that there's not been residential increase, I've been there for thirty-two years, all right? There were no houses. There was no Cunningham, there was no Brookdale, there was nothing, okay? And there's obviously a lot more houses and a lot more traffic on the road. And it's just, it's just too dangerous to then increase that kind, like more commercial traffic, more activity in that intersection. The schools weren't there. So I think that we need to address that, the problem of the traffic and that intersection itself specifically before, or in conjunction, in conjunction to the TC zone. Because that's for me, and I, I know there's a lot of other people in the area that feel the same way about that intersection, so.
We're going to start working with the county and the state right away, January of twenty-three. But it is, it's probably the biggest concern that everybody has and people at this table as well, these two tables. Thank you, Joanne. Elizabeth Gilleski? Okay. Oh, Cheryl Gendura? Oh, there you are, hi. Very well, how are you?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Gendura and I live at thirty-three Wisman Road on two houses in from fifty-five. My concerns are a couple of things. First of all, if you drive down fifty-five, there's already shopping centers, if you go towards Poquet that have empty vacancies in there that they could start businesses in there. And they can go right down here to the corner fifty-five and eighty-two and they can put a store in there if they'd like. Is there stores that have vacancies in there? So I can't see how having more stores on this short strip would bring more income in. They may be abandoned, open vacancies as well. If they can't fill those, they can't fill those, why are we going to put more up to have more open vacancies? Also, if you put townhouses in, in a small area, for safety reasons, you have to have lights on all night for these people to be in and out of the complex. So now we're going to have lights on all night in a, you know, I don't want to be backed up to a residential area that has lights on twenty-four hours a day because it becomes a safety issue for these people getting in and out of these townhouses and apartment complexes or whatever we desire to put up. Also, it's going to be an increase in children coming into townhouses and condominiums. So now we're going to have more children in our school districts. That means we're going to have to increase the amount of teachers we have in our schools and classrooms, and it just keeps going up and up. And there goes our taxes up again. So those are my concerns for that. You have increased in the amount of children and people in the area. And again, we already have open vacancies in complexes for having storefronts, so that's my, my two concerns, as well as an increase in traffic. I mean, where my house is, is the beginning strip of the Indianapolis to get to fifty-five, is there skid marks going straight to fifty-five from my house. As my mother keeps saying, we need to put a line through the middle so at least we know who's on what side when you come out. So when they're racing, they can race two lines to go down. So I do have some concern as well with the, the traffic increase. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
I think, real quick, just some of the things, if you look at the old code compared to what the code is now, what we're proposing to change the code to is less intrusive on the area. What was proposed in the zoning code before had warehouses of fifty thousand square feet, shopping centers of twenty-five thousand square feet. So what we're proposing now is actually limiting the commercial use from thirty percent, which was part before, down to fifteen. So we're actually making it a little bit smaller based on what was actually in the code before. So we're technically making it more restrictive than it was before. So if you look at the way it was set up and the uses that were allowed before, the traffic impact from the previous code would be a lot higher than what I think would be done now. And as we build it out, if hopefully people build out, if this does go through, we'll see that impact. One of the other things that is, like Nan described, as we talked about it, was the dark sky and the design standards for that lighting. So there is a lot in, in the design standards and in the lighting that would make sure that it doesn't impact the area around it. So there's a lot in, in that, and there was a lot of thought, a lot of thought put into that, so it doesn't affect neighbors around the area. And then another thing is, I know you referenced the vacant buildings and stuff, and that's one of the reasons why the density is increased in the area. More houses would mean more need for commercial, which would hopefully keep those buildings full. So that's one of the things of why the density is increased in the TC. And that's the goal and the game plan of keeping those commercial buildings full.
I don't really know about all the school districts, but I mean, we've been told that their numbers have been going down because a lot of people, even in Unionvale, you know, in the last census, we were over, we're almost forty-eight hundred people, we're down to forty-five hundred people. In Unionvale, forty-five, fifty-eight is our pop, is our population. And so it's been going down. The presumption is that the school enrollments have been going down, that's what we've been hearing. I think the taxes went up with the schools, having something to do with buses. I don't think it was more teachers for increased enrollments, is what I heard. Yeah, so, I mean, you know, it, there's probably room. We've been told that, you know, that it wouldn't impact that greatly. And the small footprint of these commercial establishments means the energy costs would be lower for whoever buys them and or owns them. And so, you know, I think there's been a lot of thought given to all of those angles. But safety is the most important thing, and what we'd like to do was work with the county and the state on those roads. That, that's the thing that we're going to start on right away. And, and the rest of it is kind of up to the owners and what they decide to do, but the, the roads, we're going to keep them flooring, the state to work with us on that one.
Yeah, I think it's important to notice that everybody's concerned about traffic was everybody on this board, on these two tables concerned too. That was one of the things that we brought up from day one, was the traffic impact and especially on the couple of intersections. But our hands are tied because they're county and state roads. So we've been working with the county, like Betsy said earlier, and they said they would help us work with the state as well. So, you know, we're going to push forward on that and, you know, try to increase the, you know, help with the intersections, the site distances and all those things.
But on the plus side, some people have said to us, you know, the residents would like maybe something a little closer to go. Maybe I'd like to go by to a flower shop or something a little bit closer. Some people would like to walk there if they could. I mean, we have heard some positive stories too, so we have to leave it up to the owners to get through the planning board of these properties. If they decide to bring in an application, they have to go through the process. And there are public comments on all of those too. So public input is really important in this process, even with each application that comes to planning board. So you can watch that on the town's website and see who's coming and when, and please come and voice, if, if something, if somebody materializes and comes, you should come and listen to what their exact plan is and comment then too. That's why, you know, we work together on stuff. All right.
Do you know the acreage of what you, let's say there are ten parcels, I don't know how many parcels there are in this town center, but out of those parcels, like you know how many, and you'll say that too, but like how many are, does it go from one acre and there's, there's ones that's thirty acres or?
Yeah, I mean, when we did the study, there's probably twelve parcels that are available for some, it's not a fifty parcel enormous place. So there's maybe twelve parcels that are eligible to be built on. And, you know, maybe they're, they range in size from, what's the smallest one? Ten, two acres maybe, which is really small. And then, yeah, and then there, it goes up to, there's one that's forty-five. So they, there's a range. But it would be twelve parcels, yes Vicki? Sure.
And I forgot, because I wanted to bring this up, but the other day I went to Act on forty-four and I saw that beautiful barn and now it's all like townhomes, all the real place, the traffic is all crazy. And that's what I think is going to happen down there. That is my, that is my fear, so can you speak to?
That's four, I think there's four hundred buildings in that one piece of property.
Everybody needs to understand that all these parcels are going to be predicated by other agency approvals. The DEC, that just county border health, so water and sewer is a big one. East Dale is what I believe you're talking about. They have Poughkeepsie Water and Sewer. So therefore, their density can be ten times even more than that than what we're even proposing here. So that's going to be dictated, a lot of these parts are going to be dictated by what the Board of Health is going to govern. And we don't have water here, so everything's well and stuff because everybody knows here, so.
That slows things down.
Yeah, so, you know, we may have a density on a parcel, but if the Board of Health doesn't approve it, they're not going to get that density. So East Dale is a whole different animal.
I got one question. I'm just wondering, how do you redone something without even talking to the owners first?
So, Rosemary, it's done by the legislative action of a town board. You and I did have a phone conversation.
That was way after you.
Well, we haven't, yeah, right. I talked to people in your family. I didn't know that you were in charge. I mean, there's a name on there, you know, we, so we did, we received a letter. So we wrote the letters to get people to come in and talk to us, and most of the people we've been able to reach, there's like, I think there are two people that we have, and there are three people that we haven't been able to get to. We did talk to some people in your family, you did call, we did talk later, but we haven't voted on this either. We're not voting on this tonight either. So, you know, if you have, if you hear something like from your family members that we did speak to and we, you know, I know there's been social media chit chat and that sort of thing. It's always best if you just call the source and call Town Hall. We would have asked you to please come in so we could. We were meeting with all the individual owners, especially those that called after getting the letter. So, and we sent another letter recently. So we tried really hard to reach out. There's one other owner that we, we called the same phone number all the time, we can't get anybody. So we have tried. And if you want to talk tomorrow or after this, we're more than happy to give you more details, but I think I gave you the quick synopsis on the phone and, but we'd love to spend more time with you. We could go through more with you. So, yes. You know, would you do me a favor? Do you mind coming up? Because otherwise they won't hear you, the people on Zoom won't hear you. And then we'll get back to the list, I apologize.
Tim Dunham, I live on Hyview Road. George, when you were talking about the water, is there any concern that, you know, you could deplete the aquifer?
Again, that's done on studies. Depending on the size of development, there's test wells that are put in. That information, my understanding is that information goes to the Board of Health.
So that will be part of the whole planning process, okay.
Thank you. All right, Joe Kelly?
Good evening, everybody. So I have a, a letter which I'll share with the board when I'm finished, but, you know, the first thing. Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
The name of your source.
Yep, Joe Kelly, West Claude Mountain Road. Yeah, so, and I've lived here for twenty-six years. So I've seen a lot of changes over the years for sure. The, the, you know, the, the changes proposed under the, under the local law for the TC zoning, I had submitted a FOIL request about, what, over a week ago, asking for all of the, you know, the environmental assessment forms and the copies of any analyses or anything. And I got just the part one of the EAF and I haven't gotten the rest of anything yet, so I look forward to getting that. But in the meantime, you know, it would, I think, be helpful if the town considered adjourning the public hearing until the, the board has published the assessment of the impacts and the zoning changes, you know, is outlined in part two of the full EAF so that the public could review it and comment on it before they make their decision. Also, the updated zoning map, there were a few parcels that I looked at that, that, you know, that could be considered maybe not, not quite compatible with the town center zoning, kind of the way it's, it's, looks like the intent is. And that's one eighteen Cunningham Drive, that's currently in the one R, the R one district. And then also eleven and thirty-three Wisman Road, which are currently in the TC district. But given the character of Wisman Road and the fact that there, there are, you know, there's Dutchess County Agricultural District number twenty-three, I requested the town board consider including those in the R one or R A three district as appropriate to maintain the rural character of the town. Also, under the chapter two, ten, attachment one, which is the district schedule of area and bulk regulations, the, the regulation says you described, it changed to allow, there's no minimum lot size for residential lots in the TC district. And frontages and things have been reduced. So there is a potential for, for increased density, including the density bonuses. So that should also, you know, I'm sure they're considered, we just haven't seen that information yet. And then chapter two, ten, attachment two, the district's schedule of use regulations. There, thank you. There also were uses, changes to uses in the neighborhood commercial and the airport zoning districts that were proposed. And I didn't see any discussion of that in the EAF as well as any mention of that to the public. So it would be helpful to, if the town board would explain what those changes are in as well. And then I do have some comments on the street specifications, two of the figures, which I can just share with the board. It's not, you know, they're technical in nature. There's no need to, to talk about it here. Thank you.
Now, those figures in the back of those street specs are going to have to be redone because they're quite old, so we're, that's our to-do list. But I believe that most of, all the documents that we're, we're discussing tonight are all on the website. And I know if you called a town clerk and ask her, she always directs everybody as to where to get everything. We have part two and part three of the EAF are part of the resolution of adoption, which we're not going to do tonight. So we've got more information to share, okay? Okay, thank you very much. Karina Kelly?
Hi, good night. My name is Karina Kelly. I live at two, three, nine West Claude Mountain Road in La Grangeville. I will not be near as technical as my husband, as I am not highway engineer. But being a former town board member and following the process for a long time, certainly zoning has been a complaint in this town for as long as I can remember. And I do appreciate that the town board has really taken it very seriously and has sort of formed this subcommittee. I think it's been a long time in coming. But as a resident of the town, I also have concerns with, first of all, as a former town board member, I have concerns about transparency. And I don't feel everything was fully made available in time for residents who don't have, who haven't studied this for a year, who are not highway engineers for twenty-eight plus years, to be able to digest. I am glad to hear that although it was slated to be voted on by the town board tonight, that my understanding now from Supervisor Moss is that that will not be happening. So I do appreciate hearing that because I, I never feel it's a good idea to just have people come just to say things when you're, you're only going to know how you vote when you come in anyway. So I do appreciate that. One of my concerns was, I was very surprised to read that no churches would be allowed. And I just, that brought up like a little discriminatory issue in me. I'm not really sure how you can prevent churches from being in there. I guess in the back of my head, I'm thinking, is it because they don't pay taxes? And the town board's concern is in getting taxes. Meanwhile, we know that the town of Unionville has a very poor structure for commercial taxes. They actually pay the same tax rate as residents. They do not pay increased as in other towns, as well as many of the area commercial bases have what's called tax areas, which mean they say, oh, we're not worth that, so you can't charge us that. And so then they don't get charged even what they're worth at what a resident would have to pay. Thank you.
A few children. Come on. No? Okay. Kevin Walsh? Kevin Walsh in? Sure, okay, thank you, Anne. Would you like to take it up for him? Anne Walsh? She passes as well, okay. Is there anybody else who would like to comment? This, that's the end of the list. Hello there, yes, step on up.
I wanted to comment.
Hi, everybody, I'm Bob Stokely. You're coming down fifty, um, you're coming down fifty-five towards Poughkeepsie, you make that right onto Roswell, you know, Route twenty-one. And then I'm the first house on the right. So my house is surrounded three sides. So I got the road on the one side. And then all three sides is town center. So I knew when I bought that house in nineteen ninety-four that, oh, they could build something. And I said, well, you know, they could even change it to make it residential. But I wasn't worried because it's a, most of Unionville, it's five acres. it's a, most of Unionville, it's five acres to build a house. Well, now it's half an acre. So me, I mean, I'd go out the back door naked, jump in the pool. Really? Nobody can see me. I got nobody anyplace, right? It's all empty. But with this zoning change, and believe me, I know Max, I met him a couple of times. I don't really know him, but he's a nice guy that owns that 35 acre lot that, you know, I guess he bought it about 20 something years ago, almost 25. But I don't mind if things build along 55. Go ahead. You know, and maybe, you know, make it a 30 mile an hour zone would be safer. I don't know, whatever the state does. But I have the potential of having nine neighbors, nine houses being built around my little one acre. You know? And I'll be going from country life to city life. I mean, that guy, if he wants, can build 70 houses in that lot. Yeah, with a few storefronts down there at 55. But the rest of it that's not on 55, he can make that all residential. And I mean, I'll be living, it'd be like living in the city. A half, a half acre every house. I mean, I thought I had a crap property with my one acre. Yeah. So that's all. I don't mind building up around 55. I just don't want them coming. Yeah. You know, it's even on the other side of my house. Here's 55. Here's my house. And then all this over here. I mean, what are you going to do? Cut it into half acre lots or half acre lots?
Remember that interesting thing, one of the new concepts that was brought to us by Nan was the conservation subdivision. And 50% of that 35 acres is going to have to be open. Yeah. So you need to come to the public hearings and say, make the open space around my house. You know, that, that kind of thing. So I mean, I think that there's always room for discussion. And, you know, you could threaten to keep swimming like that and they don't want to go. So I think there's again, lots of discussion to be had, but every one of these parcels is going to be 50%. It will be an open space. And we're going to get a lot of advice from our Conservation Advisory Council and all, and members of the planning board will help them site and get approval, but the CAC is going to help with, you know, where the, the open space can be and maybe where plants should be there. We're going to get, we're going to get a lot of community home. So you'll be well represented.
It's terrifying. I'm not allowed to do more than two loads of wash because the well, my well's only like 80 feet deep. You know, you put seven houses around me, I'm not going to be allowed to take a shower.
So one of the other things through the conservation subdivision is that it takes the characteristics of a property and divide, it design around them. So I think where your house is, right, it's kind of a slope up. It's a hill on that corner of the property there. So what would basically happen is, I mean, without looking at a plan and designing it, we also did put in a steep slopes ordinance, right, is in, is in here too. So we would preserve steep slopes. And we would also develop in areas that aren't so heavily forested, that are more fields. You know, like we're, we're going to try to keep the, the characteristics of the property the way they are and try to develop in areas that are good for development instead of that would be bad for development. So that's what is a lot in the design standards and a lot through the conservation subdivision takes into the characteristics of the property, each parcel.
It's very doubtful that you're going to see a lot of houses right around you because of the 50% open requirement.
And they can't get to it because there's no entrance to that lot except through 55. That's what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that because I'm not commenting on the site itself. I, I don't know. And, but you know, Max is on that land how many years?
About 24.
And he hasn't developed it yet. So I think, and he has met with us.
He's been trying since the beginning.
And he, it's 24 years in the making and maybe the conditions weren't right for him. But he has been trying to learn about the smaller scale, 50% open. He has been trying to learn about it and that should benefit you if he ever, if he ever.
And the conservation subdivision is basically to avoid that, exactly what you're talking about, just open houses all over the place. It's for them to be designed where they're getting, they're in, in the landscape, they're built in and they're all in one area. It's not going to be a sprawling neighborhood. I mean, where I live is Brookside. It's not going to be like Brookside where it's houses after houses after houses after houses all in a row divided up like that. It's more of like more intimate cul-de-sac setup where more houses are in one area instead of developing the whole piece of property. So.
70, 70.
Seven zero houses.
So you'll have to.
55 acre lot and they're going to be subdivided to half acre lots.
No, so that's not exactly.
It's not how it works.
No, that's not exactly how it would work. But yes, I mean, density, it would be 70, 70 houses in the long run. But he needs 15% commercial of square footage that matches the residential. So don't forget that's going to take off a lot of acres that it could use for homes. 50% of that parcel has to stay open space as well. So it, it does make a little bit harder for them to plan. And then like as George said, they have to also put in water and sewer. So it's not going to be as easy as you think to throw 70 houses on that piece of property just because it's what allows, what's allowed.
The Department of Health might not let them for that many. You know, there's a lot of.
Yeah, and there's a lot that goes, there's a lot that goes into the actual development that, that would make it something that we can't pin down the number of, the maximum is 70, yes, but it might not get there theoretically.
The property may not allow.
Yeah, the property may not allow.
Put 70 townhouses down there next to 55.
A lot of trees on your side. Yeah. You'll help them design it.
Well, because I've been making changes to my property based on what's around me. Now I opened up these pine trees that were all around my border so I could see the woods.
Our county enforcement officer says you should be quiet now.
Hi, I'm Holly Seibert. I live on Jennifer Hill Road. I've lived there for 28 years and 26 years before that I lived off of South Cross. So you could do the math. That's how old I am. But anyways, I, Jennifer Hill Road is on the other side of 55. And this man said he had an 80 foot well and can only do two loads of laundry. We have a 705 foot well. We can only do two loads of laundry. We've raised a family of five there and my kids all are the big proponents of water conservation. So besides the traffic, which as a volunteer, I will tell you that only at 2:00 AM on the morning, if I'm going on a call, can you expect it to be safe at 55 and East Knoxon Road? Because at every other time, it's not safe to come across the hill here to go on a call. It's, it's a danger and there aren't all accidents that are reported there. But I've lived in that corridor my whole life and there's a lot of slight mishaps that don't get reported. So I know that study, the state does their traffic studies based on fully officially reported accidents. But anybody that's lived in that corridor has seen many, you know, minor mishaps. Lighting is a huge concern. That is something that those of us who live on Jennifer Hill Road, I mean, we talked to the school district when they built it. Our families that were on Jennifer Hill and Alexi Lane and Riley Road all met with the school district before. And they did agree to put in downward shining lights and water runoffs and things like that. And, and most of those needs were met because we did think it was good to put the schools there rather than make those parcels into many houses and subdivisions. But we still, you know, we, we see the lights from crosswinds right in our, our bedroom window because that's how dark it is and that's how much we like the darkness. This brings a lot of light, no matter whether it's residential or commercial. But water is a huge concern and we have known since we bought the house that we were within the town center because I do remember the old town hall across from EYAS. So that is something that I think should come higher to the top of your list. Because an 80 foot well to me sounds very good. I know there are places on Cunningham that have fire hydrant water with much higher water pressure. But there are other residents here from Jennifer Hill Road and we have done every study and we have had every official there. And I can tell you that we know when there is a pipe leak at the school district because we were there when they did the test wells and we had no water the following day. And, you know, we tried to get ourselves tied in because Charlotte Drive, you know, we can touch them, but they're a town of LeGrange and so that's different. So that is just a concern of ours and that is something that this might be a good zoning change, but no matter the change or the stay, me and anybody in the future needs water. We don't have it. And you can ask anybody on our road whether they have the well as deep as ours or not. It's, it's not a, it's, it's, we've had a water truck in somebody's yard for nine months.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anybody else like? Sure, well, he's, he's a slow walker.
Sure? I can't, I can't follow him. Yes, Glenn Morrison, 232 Blumberg. Obviously a lot of work within this proposal. And, you know, thanks to the people who spent all the time putting, putting these words together. Part of that comment is based upon a drill party digest. I mean, that's a lot of information. I read it three times. I read it four times. I, I, I probably still don't understand it. My hope is maybe we would have kind of an interactive town hall as opposed to a public hearing. And we would do it sometime after the holidays. But I do see some questions and answers going on here, which is, which is good. My comments, I took the town zoning map. I got it from the county. And I overlaid parcel access on top of that from the county. And I added up the number of properties and I realized that maybe some, some things have changed. And, and I add up the acreage and the acreage in my estimate came to over 300 acres. So it isn't just that, that mile and a half or so on Route 55, it stands back. And I took out the solar farm. I took out the school and that, that kind of stuff. So if I'm wrong, I guess someone please correct me. But I can see kind of mini developments going on. I can see roads accessing 55, going back into some of these deeper properties with various kinds of developments. That's where I read it, that's something that is permitted now. Again, maybe you can tell me that that wouldn't, that wouldn't happen. I'm also concerned about the traffic. I, I, I negotiate that funky intersection at Brusco and Knoxon. And I've seen lots of things at that intersection that others, others have seen. Water supplies are concerned, schools is concerned. I did read the first part of the environmental assessment. So the, the first part of it is actually online. It's, it's at the end of one of the other documents. And that indicated that the town had a solicit input from local, other local municipalities and the Duchess County Planning Board. And that input should have been received before now. So my request or my question is, did we get that input and what was that input? If I need to submit a FOIL request to get that, I can do that. But I'm interested in what came in from the, from the others. The last thing is something that kind of fell off the end. At the back end of the announcement, there was a, there was a new zoning map that had a different category called town core. And I, I don't know what, yeah, look, look at what's, what's posted. There's a new category called town core, but there's nothing in town that's the town core. So I don't know what that is. It's a question. Thank you. That's my three minutes. Thank you.
Joanne, I mean Joan North?
Yeah.
She was in the planning board of the clerk?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that. I remember years ago I'd met her at my farm and she used to be a customer. I used to be a doctor and I was like, they're half twins. Last summer, I was going to have twins.
Just do us a favor, identify yourself.
Joseph Giang Grande. I'm a neighboring constituent. I'm currently homeless and trying to fix the place up so I have a home. Basically, I used to donate here to the park, the Timor Park for many years. And my donation screening was an annual and they came to my farm and we did it for disabled adults. And I was trying to do that and two neighbor in town, but we were shut down with some bad politics. We were invited here from 292 Radio on Friday mornings from Ryan Duttry, a theologian that works on community radio. We actually named our babies after Anne Marie and called them Annie and Marie. I grew about 5,000 sunflowers because our 25 year anniversary was coming up. And I was trying to just basically put smiles on people's faces and have our little angels see that. I was just going to be out there doing something to make everybody happy and have cheer. After leaving here on the second night, I'm constable. I pulled his golf cart in, almost colliding with my vehicle on the way out on the town road right here leaving, and threatened me with arresting me for trespass. Now, I apologize if I offended anybody in this town. But alls I wanted to do was give away sunflowers free and just put a smile on people's face. On the Chamber of Commerce website and my Facebook site, Jody Grower, is actually comments from people that traveled from New York City up here. And their comments were, it was such a nice highlight to receive free flowers on our journey. So that made the highlight of our trip to the balloon festival. That's all I have. I'm not here trying to raise any kind of ruckus, but I have counsel working with me on some other problems. And then I get in contact with your counsel to find out what was going on or who was responsible for that action. That's all I have.
Thank you for coming tonight. Sorry you had a bad experience. I did see some sunflowers during the balloon festival and they were beautiful. So thank you for trying to put a smile on people's faces. And I wish you best luck. We all do. So come back and visit us. We hope to have that back maybe next Labor Day. So come back again.
And we invite you all to our farm. We're only 10 minutes down the road on 216. We're trying to get everything rebuilt, do the changes and all that kind of stuff. So we're trying to bounce back and get everything back up and running. We have no infrastructure right now.
Wow. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any?
Yeah. So when you say the guy's going to have to do water and sewer, where's that water coming from?
Well, sir.
A well.
So they'll do a well. Depending on the size of the development or the proposed development, typically the Board of Health will have them do what's called test wells. Those test wells will drill and surrounding wells around the properties are monitored. Your well will be monitored. And that's the Board of Health. It's all over their jurisdiction. So again, I just want to emphasize the fact that the town of Unionville does not have water and sewer. It makes it very difficult to develop any property here, even a single family home. I mean, I have, I just had a brand new house that got developed on the top of the hill. The well's down almost 1,500 feet. And he barely gets watered. But the Board of Health approved it. I mean, that's, that's up to that. So I just want to emphasize. And as far as the comment that was made about Cunningham having hydrants, there are no hydrants, fire hydrants in Cunningham. There's no fire hydrants at all in the town of Unionville. We have stand pipes and ponds and, and other areas, but that's the extent of it.
Yeah, let's go over here. Michelle, I can't see yours. Michelle, would you like to unmute and make a comment?
Yes, I, I unmuted. I had a couple of questions because I was trying to read everything and figure out what it was saying. On one of them, it said you were trying not to make any more cul-de-sacs and they wanted to have the middle of what they were making like with flowers. So how does that affect the cul-de-sacs that are already have been made? Are we grandfathered in or are they going to change something on our cul-de-sac? I'm at 31 Dolly Lane.
It doesn't affect existing things at all.
Okay, second, 31 Dolly Lane, we're in the Cunningham development. Now, behind me is the farm. So if they sold that, I was reading that it says they want to have the parking lots behind the buildings that they're building. So are we now? I I was reading that it says they want to have the parking lots behind the buildings that they're building, so are we now going to be looking at parking lots? With all this lighting? Or are they going to have to make them put trees or something so that they're not going to impinge? Yeah, I can't, I didn't hear that.
We're trying to figure out exactly.
There's design and landscape standards and it would go before the planning board. A proper application would be filed and. There'd be a lot of discussion before anything was done, including your input.
And one of the things that's always.
Because I mean, if. We moved to Unionville so that we could have that rural nature, not so that we can look out our back windows and now see parking lots and cars.
Well, she's not, she's right here. So one of the things that's always been in the code, just so you know, is that anything that residential that puts up to commercial, there's always screening. And that wasn't anything that was changed, it's always been in the code that way.
Okay. Because that concerns me about our. Wells as well, because if you're putting in a whole bunch of townhouses, how is that going to affect? The water, if you're going to put restaurants there, how is it going to affect the rodent population? If they're throwing out all this food? And it's going to bring more rodents? How are they going to control that?
Well, I. I think it's a little premature for some of this because we don't have a filed application. From, and it can turn that off maybe. Um, we don't even have an application for anybody yet, when somebody brings an idea and an application to the planning board, all of these issues will be flushed out. And the the various agencies that have to be involved will be involved, there will be public hearings. It's not, again, it's not us doing anything, it's these individual owners have their own ideas. And they will come to the table and they're not coming to the table trying to annoy neighbors. They're going to try to build something if they do a building that's attractive. And that's conducive and consistent with our design standards, they're going to want to get along with everybody. And they're going to want to do business in their little, the small twenty five hundred square feet, the footprints. And that may be the, you know, the commercial side, the commercial aspect, which could be a minimum of fifteen percent, they're going to want people to want to come and join them. And 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 use them and spend money there, they're not going to come in and be antagonistic at all. So I think that.
Because, you know, that.
Interested in building and then take it one step at a time with those applicants.
How does putting in?
The planning board help guide the way and come to those public hearings, I I think a lot of your concerns can be mitigated.
How does putting in townhouses?
Conservation subdivision.
How does putting in townhouses affect the property values of all those houses in Cunningham?
I I don't know that we can tell you that we've done a study or that there is a study, that it depends on how attractive they are, it depends on what the neighborhoods like. It it would depend on, and I think a lot of the interesting things that that man helped us with, with the conservation. Are going to make these these small, um. These small parcels and these hamlet-like village-like communities, I think they're going to be attractive, they're going to be sought after. You know, we also have a couple of problems in this town that some of you might not have to worry about. But we have two other markets that we're concerned about. Uh, one is the senior market, we have seniors in this town that want to sell their larger houses. They might not need affordable housing, quote unquote, because they have more income, but they might want to sell a larger house. And still be close to their grandchildren and and stay in Unionville. And they don't have any place to go, you know, they call, they call here pretty regularly, does anybody building anything over there want to be in Unionville? So we have that market that we are concerned about, people that do want to stay. Um, and then we have this the younger market, we have a lot of young people. Like Ed's age, they're young or newly married and they're, um, they they might have more income than an affordable house would, they could qualify for. A penny for a down payment on a house. And those people, those are two markets that we're also concerned about. Um, those people would like, um, um, houses with smaller footprints that they can afford and still stay here. Um, so there are, it's not just those of us that were lucky to have been here for a while and have, you know, big long driveways and lots of space. There are a couple of other markets that we're trying to help out and some of these, um, um, parcel owners, um, understand that market and and want to work with it to provide homes for those two extremes. So, you know, we have to, you know, kind of, we're trying to work with those more than one group of constituents, Michelle.
Those are good ideas, I but my. I, you know, my concern is that you're bringing all of this commercial property with lights and parking lots. Butting up to the back of our properties when we bought them, that's not what we. Came to Unionville for, we came to Unionville so that it was quiet and more rural.
Well, I apologize, there's nothing we can do about that except focus on the design standards, they're very, they're really lovely, they're strict. Um, there won't be wiggle room there, there's enough choices for every developer, so, but but downlighting and 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 all these other components are part of it, Michelle. And I remember I had an uncle that bought a pot property in in a really sought after area and he, the man had to move three times because he failed to buy that vacant lot next door and somebody always came in and ruined it for him. And he kept moving and moving and he finally learned in the fourth house, the lot next to me, that's vacant, I'm buying it because I don't want to suffer, you know, what what happens when somebody moves in next door. The good news is that you have a planning board and a planner that's helped us design things that weren't here before, we didn't have design standards. So anybody could move in and do whatever they wanted next year, but I think now if there's some good standard, I think you'll feel protected and you won't have to buy that lot next door, you know? Anyway, wait till his first application and come in. Yeah, yeah, that's, Councilman Durle was just saying the same thing, that if there's a proposal, you need, come to that. Come to that hearing and and share your concerns and 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 the people building will listen to them and want to react.
Yeah, I think also.
I I tend to come to all of them because.
Is that we're not looking to have big expansive parking lots, you know, there are things in the design standards that would be broken up. For it not to just be a sea of pavement, so that's one of the things that we thought about through this whole process was. We don't want you from your back door to have to be looking at just a large parking lot, you know, that's not what we intended, so there will be screening, there will be breakup, there will be trees throughout the parking lot, there'll be islands. It was not going to just be one big parking lot of pavement.
And it's a good segue because, um, uh, Mr. Morrison mentioned the county. Um, also the other night at the CAC meeting, there were a couple of questions that came up and and when people call Town Hall, they'll call us out, reading the document and I don't understand this or that. And what we found. Playing for the chairman, Carl Lenny and I've met with a lot of the property owners trying to explain it to them and get their feedback before, because this hasn't been voted on and we're still looking for, um, input, which is why your being here is very helpful. Um, but some of the things that we found that were written initially, like, remember the thirty five percent in the, uh, there's the design centers that you can see on the web? And there was a section that said thirty five percent and it looked like, um, because of the parking lot that, you know, I and I discussed that with Nan and it is, you know, an effort to, we don't want to see a cement. So that's going to be rewritten, so it's really clear, so we found from explaining this and talking to people about some of these documents. And the ones we submitted to the county, we found that they weren't all clear to everybody, so we are tweaking that, so there's an extra sentence that's going to be in there that will explain how much cement you can have, you can't have a sea of cement. Um, and there are lots of things from the county that we just got back late yesterday afternoon. Um, are are some of those where we have to clarify some of the things that, um, that they that they didn't quite understand, so we're working on those now and we'll have those on another day or so. But all of your input is very valued and and your, is there somebody else?
Yes, whoever CB is.
Okay, one more and I think that, um. It's cold that it is outside, it's getting warm in here and we've been. It's twenty nine. Um, so we probably should move on with our town board meeting, but let's take this last comment, um, CB? Would you like to?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, my name's Chris, I live on Wisman. Uh, I only found out about this, uh, a few days ago. Um, I do like a lot of the idea of. The town center, I am obviously concerned about. Um, water issues, well issues, uh, traffic issues as well. Um, specifically with regards to if the seat does reduce the speed on fifty five through this area. For the town center, what impact that will have on the surrounding roads, I apologize if this has already been touched upon, I wasn't able to join until. A little later into the meeting, but, uh, my concern is, we already have some people who drive. Down our roads pretty fast, um, and my concern would be anybody trying to avoid specifically the town center stretch. And, you know, driving on some of the residential roads, uh, surrounding and. Yeah, driving recklessly, if there's any studies being done on traffic impact and things of that nature.
So, I mean. Again, I mean, when when an application does come in front of the plan where there will be traffic study stuff. I think that that's an important key part for everybody to understand, so there will be traffic studies done when applications do come in front of the plan. Yeah, that has to get circulated to the state, it will go to the county, it will go to everybody, so there will be traffic.
But why can't the board look at those areas now and do something before the goal happens?
Because nothing can get built. That's the problem, we don't, without anything in front of us, we don't know what to plan for, and also, most of the roads we don't. Govern is one of the other issues, it's the county and state.
But I I'll be, you know, we're going to start it. We're going to start talking to the state about that circle that we discussed about, but we're going to start that right away because we understand that'll take three years, you know, so. Um, and I I don't mean to be sarcastic, but they're they're not known for moving very quickly, but we're going to try. But that being said, we have a speeding problem on all of our roads. Especially these throughways, where, you know, if somebody's coming from, I'm going to blame the outside resident. Those people coming from Dover, driving through Unionville, they go too fast, we, all of our streets, we we get, it's, you know, we have to put policemen, state troopers or sheriff on almost all of our streets, it's crazy how fast everybody's driving today. So, you know, we had a, we've had, um. Ticket writing, um, um, months in the past to try to mitigate some of that and and I wish people would just slow down, but, um. And I I think a lot of them are out of town, they've got to be, um, but, you know, it it's there and it's all over the place, you don't need a traffic study for that. People to slow down, you can't walk your children and your kids along the road without being cared for in some of these neighborhoods and. It is a problem and we've got to come up with better ways to, and ticket writing seems to be the only thing that works. But, um, I I don't, that one's a tough one because people, um, you know, from out of town misbehave. So, uh, but the traffic study will come when the application, the real traffic study will come when the application.
So is there a chance of another, um, town meeting, the decision, you still have some other documents that are coming in? And explain more, especially with a a map that really shows all of the different properties and and.
The newer one, because, yeah, that 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 slimmed down a little while. Yeah.
My question is, what are the next steps, because you said there was no vote today, so you're still reviewing documents, you're still planning, so what are next steps?
So the next step is we have to study the comments that we got back from the county and make all those word changes, not anything big, because we're not doing anything substantially different. There have been some very good ideas that have come in, um, for the town of Unionville by residents and friends of Unionville that we are putting on a to-do list for for twenty twenty three. You know, there's some really interesting ideas for zoning and things that, um, that would help us in areas where we need some help. Um, and clean up more, but that's that's a substantive change that we're going to start studying in twenty twenty three. Um, right now, we're waiting for all those comments, we're going through all the comments that we've received and and, um, just looking for language, you know, where we, the word was incorrect or typos, you know, fixing things. So we're doing those now, um, in the next few days and then we're going to send those back out to everybody. And then, um, we're going to probably, you know, we're going to try to get, we have to get this finalized before, um. I don't know exactly, but we, I know the moratorium runs out on January third.
So will the vote be before then?
The vote should be before then, only on this portion, not on the other stuff that we have that we.
What portion?
The portion that we're, that you see on the website, that it has to, the portion that you see on the website is what we feel comfortable with. And that is minus some. I think there's some clarification language that we've discovered from talking to folks that will, will clean that up a little bit, make sure people understand it when they read the same sentence. And other than that, that, those groups of documents are in pretty good shape. And if we get those in really strong shape, then we would be prepared to vote on them.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Karen Zierman, I'm at eighty seven Cunningham Drive. Um, one other question I had, so. We have a great volunteer fire department, we have great support from our state police, we have our EMTs. Um, with this new development coming into place, has. Have you considered having the developers given a subsidy or a contribution to EMT and Fire? Um, because I don't know if you're aware, there is a county crisis right now, there's an EMT shortage, Unionville is currently outsourcing to AMSTAR, I believe. Um, to cover. Our our needs in that degree. So when these new developments start, whether it's residential, whether it's commercial, emergencies happen everywhere, right? So what are we doing to build that infrastructure to make sure that if there's a fire on Cunningham and there's a fire over. And one of the residents over there, how are our, how are we building support for that as well?
Well, I mean, can you want to take that one?
Yeah, I would say the fire district and the fire company are always recruiting. Uh, we we certainly could use more, but we have sufficient. Uh, people now to cover the needs of the town and we have a very good mutual aid program at all surrounding fire towns and just towns and fire districts. So when there's ever a crisis. Uh, firefighters and all first responders come together, police, fire, rescue and, uh, things get taken care of.
Okay.
Certainly, more volunteers are definitely needed all around.
So like, if tomorrow there was a hundred and fifty houses built, do we have enough support right now?
Uh, overnight we wouldn't have that much.
So what steps would be taken before we get the extra hundred and fifty houses? To make sure that we have that support, like, would we need to increase presence, recruitment, like, what does that look like?
We're always increasing recruitment and hopefully, as new homes, there would be. Certain percentage would probably be volunteers.
Thank you.
It's also, it's a, it's a, it's a very good point that you raised because, and we did write in to the specs, you know, the fire, we have a fire advisory council. And we want the, um, the fire district will be reviewing all of these and the way the roads are structured and can the fire trucks get around properly and all of that, so there's, there's going to be an integral part of the review process.
That's a new issue that. I know the board firm has extended once, what's the problem with extending it again?
It's been extended twice and we have no more. That was the second and final extension, so. I mean, I think, I I think that we can have a lot of discussions about what's in there and if they're, if they're, if. They're cleaned up, meaning that some of the word choices are cleaned up, I I I think, um. Most of the people that we've dealt with, especially the people in this advisory group and our professional and some of the residents we've met with have been quite pleased with them. So when we get, we'll we'll reload them on the website and we urge everybody to look at them again and come. Don't, I mean, I would suggest social media is not a place to get information about stuff like that, please, please, it's it's funny, you feel like you're talking to your high school child, but. You you please call Town Hall and come in, make them, you know, make a an appointment. We'll sit down and go through it with you, but get your information directly from us and we'll give you the new material, whatever you want, we're here, we want to answer your questions, but please come in and and we're glad to talk to you about.
Yes. On the twenty first of November, it says that you voted already? Am I letter here?
We voted to. I don't know what the letter, I I can't remember the letter, but we we voted on the twenty first to have a resolution of introduction. Which included the public hearing notice. We vote on something every month practically, but that's what that letter should mean, I was here. And that's what, um, Clerk Casey was reading at the beginning. From that exact same document. Well, yes. You you know, you need to come up, I'm sorry, but, um. It's just be there for the people on Zoom. And I think this will be our last question, if everybody's okay with that, it's almost nine and we've got a board meeting to get through, yes, go ahead and identify yourself, please.
Yeah, hi, I'm Maya, I live on Notton Creek, um. I just had a clarifying question, you said you would be voting before the third on the first portion, what would be the rest of it?
Oh, the rest of it were policy ideas that have come in that we are putting on a list for twenty twenty three consideration.
Sounds good.
So I and I haven't typed those up yet, but we've been getting them on emails and various things, so they're quite good, a lot of them are quite good, we're going to have a list that we post. And the board's going to have to start working on those and see, um, you know, you know, exactly what they are and, you know, what we might want to be following up on, some of them are good, and so we're going to look at that, but that stuff's bigger and that's a twenty twenty three issue.
Sure.
Can I give you an example? Yeah, let me think, we were talking about this this morning.
Some of the county comments, right?
Um. Let's see, we had. It it has to do with things like, um, the the, not the conservation subdivision, but changing things in the code. Um, that are affected, like, getting rid of rid of cluster developments in favor, all in favor of conservation subdivisions. You know, getting rid, which we're not going to talk about that right now because that's the rest of the code. You know, changing things like that that are more consistent with all the environmental things that we put into this TC zone. Meaning that the the there's a lot of environmental considerations with the density bonus. And the conservation subdivision in and of itself at the fifty percent is really important and one of the biggest things is, do we want to carry that out and have that done throughout the whole town? So that's a big policy change for us.
I think one of the main things is that. Not only was the sex. I think one of the main things is that not only was the section of the code for TC very convoluted and it's just a spider web that's all throughout it, that's the way the whole code is regarding it in every district. So the, the whole code in general needs a lot of cleanup. The only thing is that costs a lot of money. So we focused on TC now and will hope to hopefully branch out to more areas because the code is very, very confusing and it branches out a lot.
And here's another example that we've been talking about, solar developments. Do we want to have a thirty acre parcel be permitted to have, kind of like the town center, the town put up on Route fifty-five? Do we wanna see those all over town? That's one, you know, those are things that we have to have conversations about.
Yeah. It's about the rest of the code.
Yeah. I just wanted to say to your point earlier, there are people my age or a little older than me that do wanna move back here and start families and to have like little parcels, to have little houses that are semi-affordable, if not like affordable right now, would be really helpful. Like people do wanna raise their families here and come back. So it's just something to think about.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So I feel like I've heard two different things. Is the local law?
No, we're not quite ready. We have to.
Going to do it prior to January.
Yes.
But you don't know, you don't have a meeting between now and then.
Well, we're gonna schedule, and we're gonna, we have to talk about this tonight. It may be. I have to talk to the attorney that's involved. So I mean, you know, it'll be set and be posted when it's set. Okay, so. So the one thing that everybody should keep in mind, I think that we're very lucky. We have this wonderful little, this Unionville and I feel like we're surrounded by, but other than Washington to the north and Dover's got some beautiful cars, but we are surrounded by much bigger towns. But everything that's been changed in this town center zone, we feel is a real positive to help protect that what we've built here. And we're gonna try very hard in twenty twenty-three to, that young lady's point, to talk about things that will, will take some of these good environmental ideas and open space ideas and move them throughout the town in a way that everybody's gonna like. So there'll be a lot of conversation about this, we think, that you'll enjoy. But that being said, I think we've covered everybody. We thank you so much for coming. One of our staff members has been waiting to report for two hours, so we're gonna move on to our town board meeting. Gonna call that the public hearing is now over. Thank you all very much for coming.
Who?
We're sorry. Can you give her like a two second?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good seeing you.
I'm gonna remove myself from the main table.
Good night, guys.
I almost fall over.
I can never know.
No, I know. I'm gonna share a color. My bro. Hey, that was a pretty nice. That's why. He's nice. No problem. Let me check my. I'm free. If it's free, it's for me. I hear a rest. Yeah, shoot buddy. Or a pie. You gotta go down.
We should at least put in her mileage. Yeah, it was nice. I'm glad you got it.
He said Leslie about two months.
Don't worry about it. As long as you stay buying those trucks, that's it, you just come up with the money. Yeah, but a stainless iron.
So you're still doing, that's what we're doing, about eighty thousand, forty-two thousand.
Yeah.
Like the last two years?
Yeah. Oh, keep them both. Really? Does that money you put up for auction be gone? Keep the truck, because you know you get to use it. Doing good, I must say. Oh, yeah. Yeah, you can't deal with that. Yeah, that's smart. And do we have any bottled water? Excuse me.
The salt, the salt. And then, you know, with all the electronics. And they're probably not worth their cash. That's a lot better. Like that, I think I can swing. I won't be asleep at night over that.
How was your day?
Um, I didn't go out, it was a Saturday.
Friday night.
Yeah, I didn't go out Saturday, but we're early. I was, I was late. By the time I went out, I was asleep. We had snow up for the valley, it happened. I noticed that when I went down, I was.
He went down that hill.
He went down that hill. And it's twisting. They started flying them. Staring at the flag. Last year. He spun out. All right, we're up to now. This is straight. They're riding, we, we did ride them together. Were they scared? We'll bounce off those trees. Oh, man. Yeah. Yeah, he was happy. He says most of them. Yeah, you don't, you don't see that a lot, a lot of times. You guys park the truck. Barry, you all right?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Been exhausted.
Long days.
I know. I said we're sleeping with that.
What's that?
Sleeping with that.
That's right.
So when I drove.
I didn't even shoot a deer. I, I saw a couple of, I saw a couple of big socks. And I had them on camera. It's basically only, that's my answer about that thing. It doesn't work. Shoot it down. No. What did it look like, you know? Oh, it's very wide. Okay. That bump is not a great bump. I know that too. I know. When you first, I know, when you first see it, you think it's impressive. I would love, I would love to kill that deer, so tell us in front of the other deer. It's a terrible rack. It's tied like this. It's got little times like that. So it's like, I'm like, shit, I wish I had that deer on camera a bunch of times. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What? Fine.
Okay.
Also, that's. No, I wrapped them.
That's a good open.
Yeah.
All right, let's move things around a little. We just like turn this.
I think you're right.
What's that?
They're staying here.
Oh. Take me with you. Yeah. I think that one had a really good point.
Yeah. Yeah, especially in teens.
Yeah.
Uh, she's. Uh, she is, but much less active since she's busy with work.
Okay. You guys ready to, you're gonna go through this stuff really quick. I'm gonna go through. It's gonna talk about the highlight bits which you have.
What do you want me to read?
Uh, yeah, we gotta go to, um, thirty eight. See resolution thirty eight?
Do you want me to read that?
Yeah, not yet.
I'm anxious, so I'm not that anxious.
So, um,
That's right.
I'm gonna read.
I'm gonna start over. Tempero's here.
Yeah.
Put the pressure on you now.
We saw something that we don't wanna see again.
Okay. We got recreation.
All right.
You got the constable report, councilman Gussikoff. What do you wanna do with the animals? Control officer. There in your packet. We're gonna race through this stuff, okay?
All right.
Skip over some of them.
Let's, uh,
Kevin is gonna.
Should we stand for the pledge?
Okay, I wasn't sure about that. All right, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would everybody please join me in a slitting flag? The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which extends one nation, under one individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Uh, we're gonna be talking fast and moving right through everything. Um, we don't have the minutes for November sixteenth, so we're going to vote on, uh, those minutes. You may have just gotten them, but if you could read those, then we'll vote them on, vote on them the next meeting. Um, as far as the town supervisors' report, um, I wanted to say, first of all, thank you to our new Santa, Jerry, who was at the grand illumination. He did a fantastic job. He walked into town hall one day and was recruited, but the man, the man did it, did a terrific job and, um, was a great sport, which we all very much appreciated. Um, and so thank you, Jerry, at town residence as our new Santa. Um, I also, um, have some correspondence and things, but I'm gonna not do that because we're so behind and I think we should jump into doing, taking care of our, um, um, town business. Now, you gentlemen, that we, we have, um, Danielle had her baby, as you guys all know. Our keeper had her baby about a week early. So Laura just got the financials out. She's learning the first time. So you got them in hard copy and sent email to them.
Yeah, that's fine.
So call me if you have any questions, but the next month, we'll be, you know, right on track. So you'll get them, you know, early on email like, like you used to.
Wouldn't be Christmas without them.
You get hard copies. Um, the only thing I'm looking for in here, I wanna make sure we got, yeah, we do have transfers. We have to do most of them. Um, now, other than that, I'm not gonna go through the, the normal report because, um, we will go through a big long one later. We gotta, just cash flow. We are at a hundred and fourteen percent in cash. We're fourteen percent of our budget. We're ninety-eight percent of expenses. So we're two percent below. Um, the cash levels haven't changed that much, so I'm gonna move on because I say the same thing at every meeting. At this point, I'm gonna say, are there any board member reports? Councilman Durley?
I forego my time.
Councilman Will.
I would just say in a word, reviewing the zone for TC.
Yeah.
It's a tedious job. Good job. Thank you for all of our work. Councilman Gussikoff, you too.
I can report on the recycling center.
Yeah, we'll take it off and maybe this, that would be excellent. Thank you. Go ahead.
Since our last meeting, we progressed from the recycling center to the booth. It was, uh, all the electric work was done. The installation was done. We put it in place. Thanks to Jake installing all the windows and doing all the sheet rock. The place is fully functional now. I'm sure the people that work down there are pretty happy. I think they had a great weekend this past weekend. They're nice and comfortable with some heat in there. Um, and we'll continue to, I know we're gonna continue to revisit the site to make some future improvements.
Yeah, I think we have office chairs. One's in, the other one's coming. Maybe it was here today. We've got Jake and company built some really nice shelves on the wall and that counter. I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna be a nice spot. We're not gonna be able to get them out of it.
Yeah.
You're gonna wanna move, right?
Yeah, put a little cotton there.
Yeah. That looks great. Thank you very much. We saved an awful lot of money with that project. So, thank you, councilman. Councilman Giffey?
Oh, I'm just gonna say, the, uh, looking at the TC's own, some more of the county report that came in. Um, it was nice to see all the people that were involved, the residents that were involved and engaged tonight. Um, I hope they stay engaged and stay tuned.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you for all of your hard work on it as well. Um, um, town highway superintendent, would you like to go through?
All right, just a couple of things. One, I'd like to thank the board and the supervisor for our brand new pickup truck. Much needed. We greatly appreciate it. Collect the guys really enjoy it. Thank you so much. We've been out only twice this year, plowing and selping, more selping than plowing. We're doing the best we can, but, uh, these last couple of it was just brutal trying to keep ahead of the ice. Just the upcoming weather for this weekend, um, it looks like it's gonna be all rain and then possibly switch over to a freeze of ice late Friday evening into Saturday uh, with heavy winds. So if you see a tree go down on the road, please let me know. We'll take care of it as long as there's no wires, of course. I see road conditions. Again, call me on that. Try to stay on top of it. We're not on every road every minute. Don't hesitate to call me. Guess in more formal business, we did our, uh, annual bids.
Yeah, and the board, you gentlemen have the, um,
Our materials. And, uh, we basically, uh, we just approved all bids and we'll use whoever just most competitive at the time.
Okay.
So that went well. Um, and so what we would normally do after this report on the bids that were accepted is that, uh, I'd like, and councilman Welsh, this is usually your honor, could you make the motion to, uh, accept the highway bid?
Yes, I'll, I'll move that motion and accept all these highway bids then December seventh.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. We will accept the highway bids as suggested by the highway superintendent. Um, we should talk about the salt shed.
Right, we did have a catastrophic event at the salt shed, uh, the gable end on the south side. Basically just blew out. So there's only three, two sides to the building. North side and south side. Uh, right now, we're protecting our material with a large truck. Uh, the salt shed is nearly full, uh, so the course of action as of right now is to stabilize the building. We're waiting for our engineer to tell us the best way to do that, and then we'll have to proceed to give us some bids for that one. Um, and then we're waiting also for recommendation on whether to repair the shed that we have or replace it. Once I have that information, sure.
So, uh, it's covered, it's covered by our insurance company, as you guys, you might, I'm sure.
The gigland damage is covered.
Yeah, that, that part is, uh, covered and anything in excess of that that we decide to do is on us.
Is out of our pocket, yeah.
Right, and they were, they are replacing that wall. They are replacing the damaged tank that was there. They are replacing any missing salt, but that says there really wasn't much missing, so there's a little bit. So they're gonna take care of it. It's fully covered, but, um, we, uh, we got one quote on repairing the wall. We're trying to get another before I submit the numbers to, um, the, um, insurance adjuster because he said he does not familiar with our prices and we can tell him. You know, um, that would be helpful for him. Um, there's no rush, but, um, we, we haven't gotten a second set of numbers yet. So, so we had something to compare it to.
We do have to stabilize.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and that's what Tom's working on right now. Yeah, so when we, we'll be hearing about this again when, uh, Tom gets back, just about a couple of ideas to stabilize. And he came over with the structural engineer too, didn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's in the works. All right, so we'll get that out to you, um, on email as soon as we have stuff, okay? Um, anyway, so that's all you had and the motion passed and you're, you're in good shape and, um, we're gonna have a resolution about the truck that we're ratifying, um, since we got that out. So thanks. Sorry to keep you up so late.
Yep, thanks, Ed.
No problem.
Rest up for storm.
Okay, uh, next up, town clerk report?
Happy holidays to everyone.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Town court?
Twenty twenty two Laker Lake Lake Forest are on sale and, uh,
Great, good pricing.
Oh, same price as last year, a hundred non-resident, fifty dollars for resident senior and W five for resident.
Right, and we get some LaGrange business, right?
Yeah.
They're a bargain for everybody.
They just started to make the manager step.
That's all the branches. Uh, I guess that they use Royal Cardy, but Royal Cardy doesn't wanna do it anymore, so they're not gonna, LaGrange is gonna close it down. They don't wanna. So they called and they wanted a shared service and I said, well, we have a hundred dollar permit for non-residents. And I said, yeah, that's a shared service. We'll take it.
It's a sample.
Yeah, they've been promoting it and, uh, Andrea says some people have been coming in.
Good.
So that's good. Uh, you know, the nearby people will wanna use it, of course.
I knew that move would pay off.
You got the, the prettiest booth in town.
That's right.
In county. Okay, thank you, Andrea. Um, any public comments on agenda items?
Where's the agenda?
I don't know.
I don't know. Should be done by now. Thank you.
They, they, they were printed. I don't know if they walked. People may have walked out with them with the other. Yeah.
If they're strangers, they don't get it.
Okay. You need to sit at the door. You're the door guard.
Lord, that has much seed.
Oh.
High noon.
Okay, um, now we're gonna have a couple of reports. We get these folks out of here. Our first report is from Amy Watson. Who's the president of our library board of trustees and we are looking, do you wanna? That's good. Yeah, that's, yeah.
This was fun. I mean, you didn't have to do all of it, but we had a big welcoming group, right? It was a really, I was like, well, everybody really wanted to hear me speak today. So, uh, and then they got tired. But either way.
Amy, one, one second.
Oh, we want you. Oh, they're not picking you up, sorry. We need a flag back there for you, Jesse.
Yeah.
Sorry. Thank you. All right, better. Okay.
So the library has been, the board has been doing a great job. They have been meeting, uh, twice a month, so we, um, have met, uh, since October, twice a month, and, um, we just scheduled for the remainder of the, or the beginning of next year, continuing twice a month because we are on a roll now. So we've attended one training with, um, Rebecca and that was great. We have another one scheduled January to go through just what our responsibility are, uh, it will be as board members. And we have, um, I finalized, uh, that looking out with civil services, looking for, for the, the job description of the library manager. So that aligns with what we were looking at initially for a library director. So that's another whole civil service thing, but we figured it out. So it's great. I think if, if, uh, Betsy can take it forward with her person in Albany, that, that should work out well and it should align perfectly because we, uh, at our last meeting, we, um, talked about the bylaws and we each are taking a subsection offline and we're working with them coming back in January. And then we'll be looking at them on the third. And then, um, if we can't finalize at the second meeting in January. So hopefully by the end of January, we'll have our bylaws done. And that'll give us time to be interviewing for our library manager. So I think it's been good. When we were here to work with the fundraising committee a few weeks ago, the night of the grand illumination, we were thrilled to have a tour of, um, the upstairs where the library's gonna be. So I think that was a great vision for everyone, um, to be able to see the space and get an idea. And, um, as we get closer, I think the marketing part of that and having the community understand, um, you know, when we talk about town center, that's really like, this is the town center that we've been talking about and really developing that space to be more than, as you've heard me say, the frish space, but really a community space for everyone. So we're very excited.
That's great. Yeah. You got a nice group, a little sharp group.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm very eager. So I'm very excited.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for waiting around. We've.
Real big will be it for me.
Yeah.
But I have one body. Yeah.
Not personal if I meet with you.
No, not at all.
We understand.
Yeah. Um, next up is our conservation advisory council and Josh Redinger with Drove the Hap. Come on, Josh. Thank you for being patient.
Of course. I'll make it relatively quick and I will read off this as, I've been up since five thirty. My memory's a little fuzzy. All right, so just a basic recap for what the, um, CAC's done over the course of the year. So earlier this year, we finished up on the natural resources inventory and the web map that's been completed. So Unionvale has had that now for approximately a year and that's fantastic. And I believe the overlays onto the parcels are just about complete. I was talking to, um, Jen the other day and it looks like that material's pretty much there, so. So earlier this year, just a few items that we had done. So we did the Unionvale reforestation at the end of twenty twenty one. We did that again at the end of this year. That was great and planted over a hundred trees in multiple parks. Um, so we did Christmas tree recycling, January twenty twenty two. I'm not sure if that is still planned right now, but, um, we'll have to, we'll have to revisit that, yeah.
I, I, I'm gonna ask Jen which.
Yeah.
And, and because we were, we thought we'd get a lot more people to bring their old trees over, but maybe it was too early.
We also have a lot of land to throw old trees, so.
Yeah.
Just toss them down the hill, you know? So we received a five thousand dollar grant from the Clean Energy Communities Program for, um, completing some necessary actions and that's for a composting toilet. Uh, we've done the orange bag waste removal campaign. And we did that in April. I believe that's two years in a row that that's been done. Uh, we did no momei and that was actually pretty successful. Um, a lot of towns are doing no momes now and it's to really bring attention to the fact that we probably shouldn't be killing all of the, uh, flowers that all the bugs need because the bugs go, we all go, you know? So I'm a big proponent of that. I'm gonna be really trying to expand public awareness of that this year, especially in a town like Unionvale where we have so much open space. It's very relevant for us. So we also submitted a proposal to have a, um, pollinator planting garden or slash, um, small grassland and that's gonna be, hopefully if it's approved, put in across the street from the solar farm. And there will be little, um, interpretive areas where you can walk around there and just more education about why it's good to have more native wildflowers rather than just, you know, monocultures in your yard. I don't mean to get a little preachy, but. Um, so we also had the stargazing event and that was in October. And just one final thing. So we're refinishing the, or we're just about to finish the uh, climate smart community application that we've been working on for about two years. Uh, fortunately, I had a meeting with our coordinator for that yesterday and we basically have to complete two small forms and then that'll be fine to submit.
Oh, good.
By January sixth. Yeah, I'll, I'll let you know, but it's, it's literally nothing, so. Yeah, so that should be easy.
That wasn't the list I got, so that's good.
No, no, the list that you got was, um, a list of all potential things.
Oh.
Not a list of things that were actually required, which was summed up into two actual pieces of paper signed.
Oh, that's great, Josh.
And one of them's already written, so I'll, I'll just send them over to you. But yeah, it's a lot easier than we thought it was gonna be.
Great.
And, um, it's no guarantee that will be accepted when we submit the application. I, I told the person, our, our Kelsey, who's the contact at DCC, that, you know, we, we don't wanna get yanked around with this. Like, if there's gonna be a moving goalpost and if they're gonna reject our application for arbitrary reasons, there's probably gonna have to be more discussions about this. Uh, because from what I understand, eh, after you submit the application, there is a climate board that goes through and sees if the work you did was good enough. So for example, they might scrutinize the greenhouse gas inventory because it was done by students instead of, uh, other people. So there's just things like that. So unfortunately, while it's looking good that it will be um, pushed through, it's, it's actually not a guarantee, but, you know, hopefully people will behave reasonably and, uh, you know, we could resubmit the application in, in April if, if, if for some reason. If it for some reason was rejected or, you know, considered further.
The process, the reason we do this uh stuff is uh money. I mean, there there may.
Yeah.
Ways that we can get some loans or some grants rather than for things that are important to the town. And so we've, we've been jumping through a lot of hurdles. It's a lot of work.
Yeah, I would just, a little background, like there's no, I mean, we're not gonna die of climate change in Unionville within the next couple of years. But this is a way to get grants. And the way the state seems to be going is that most environmental things are being funneled through the larger guise of climate change. And you could foreseeably get squeezed out of a lot of potential um grants for any environmental purpose if you don't play along. Yeah, so it it is important to have because it could really restrict future opportunities for things that are not even related to climate. Um so that's, that's the reason for it. Yeah, so.
Stay on the good list.
Yep. Alright, that's all I have. Thanks.
Josh, thank you very, very much.
Yeah, a lot of good work.
Josh is gonna be the chair of the CAC next.
Congratulations, yes.
Which is great. So we're, we're excited about that. Alright, next up, departmental reports. Um I I suggested that our park manager should go home. Since he's been waiting uh for such a long time. And his remarks are, first of all, about the grand illumination. And I think the lights look awesome this year. They did a few things and they did, we think they did a wonderful job on the lights. He wanted to thank everybody for coming and for the rest of the staff. Um he really appreciated his work with Councilman Gussakoff in the shed at the, he still calls it the dump. We gotta work on him. But the shed at the dump, he says, um that he feels like really looks excellent. And um it, when you go in, when you guys go through there, go take a look. Um he also wanted to mention the reforestation program and working with the Girl Scouts and Josh and CAC um because he, they were all, the the staff was pleased. Uh we do have a few, a few trees left that we're bringing out in spring, but they got some planted here and they got a bunch planted at Godfrey. So they, he wanted to thank um the Girl Scouts and the CAC for their work on the reforestation, which was a success. Um and then at this point, um Councilman Welsh, will you take?
Yes, recreation. We enjoyed hosting families at our annual grand illusion event at the top of the month. Residents and non-residents enjoyed holiday themed crafts, warm refreshments provided by our friends at barbecue eighty-two, delicious cookies baked by our friends at Verdoso Cookies. A visit from Santa and of course, our light display turning on for the first time of the season. We appreciate all the efforts of the staff and volunteers and Santa for helping to make this event possible. We'll be running our full TGTT program for local schools' winter breaks. Parents can register students K through fifth grade to come enjoy organized crafts and games with friends as well as the great outdoors. Please visit the programs page through the recreation tab on the town's website for more information.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh constables? Councilman Joe? Oh, is it Joe? Councilman Gussakoff, sorry.
Uh below is the constable report for November twenty twenty-two. Constables controlled approximately six hundred ninety-eight miles of town roads, including all town properties. Filling the tour with thirty-two gallons of gasoline. The three town court days totaled twenty-six cases on the dockets with fourteen actual appearances. And one case was dismissed for failure to prosecute and officer failed to show the court. There were no issues to report. Constables reported the following during patrols. On eleven-ten, assisted Unionvale Fire Department at brush fire on Tottenham's Road with traffic control. Additional note, constable staff began working nightly at Blumer Road, November twenty-fifth through December twenty-eighth, with traffic control. We are on site to assist residents with any issues we can, keeping the traffic moving and making traffic adjustments as necessary. Respectfully, George Tredwell.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Councilman McGibney, animal control?
During the month of November twenty twenty-two, there were no lost dogs or found dogs. There was one dog complaint. Happy holidays to all respectfully submitted marriage and jobs.
Okay, on your old business, we have the land use moratorium, the town center and private roads. Um that we were just gonna talk about the county comments that we got. Um so what what Pat and I and Nan were doing, um six-thirty this morning, was reviewing those comments. And what we're doing is we're separating their comments into policy ideas that the county has. The county was very kind to us in their view because they said, oh, you haven't done anything meaningful for so many years. We, you know, we we had five people looking at this to try to give you ideas. So we're taking it um and and um. The two of them called and they were very pleased with what they'd done. I think they were trying very hard to give us a hand. And uh so we, I thank them profusely, but it was a lot of detail. So anyway, we're separating into policy on one side. And I give you, we'll give you a list of the policies, which, you know, one of them was solar development and stuff. Um and and the other one were corrections, like clarifications of what we've already done. Like, did you mean thirty-five percent here? It said fifty over here. You know, we gotta go back and go through that type of thing. So uh Pat and I have been working on those. I'm gonna list that. You didn't have time, chance to get it finished today, tonight to pass out. So I'll send it to you guys tomorrow. We'll look at the clarifications. If they're minor clarifications, if anything that's minor, we can accept. We don't have to accept anything. We don't have to vote on anything. We don't have to do anything. They just said they wanted to help us out with a bunch of suggestions. So that's all of it. So some of them, actually, we're good. And you know, we're consistent with what we wanted. And then there are a few things in there that you'll, if you haven't had a chance to read yet, are definitely for bigger towns that aren't rural. I mean, they have a couple of things that are misses.
Mm-hmm.
But that's, you know, their perspective. So yeah, we're gonna send that to you tomorrow. And I, I think the idea. Look at them tomorrow. We have to decide if they're uh clarifications of existing thoughts, which a lot of them are, then um we can include those. And then um we're gonna talk to Jim about what our timing should be. So look at them tomorrow. You'll get an email, probably in the afternoon. You get an email about what's on them. Um and then we're gonna talk to Jim and and Jeff's gonna weigh in. Um and we're gonna talk about um how small or large they are, what we want to do with them and then, but when we, next meet. So that'll come on email and then we'll post it. Okay?
Okay.
Alright, so we gotta, we gotta see what's on there before we can have a substantive chat. We just don't have it all ready yet, since it got here so late. So that's coming. Alright, uh recycling center recovered. Meeting room updates have been completed. Um we'll work on, I guess there's an echo here and there. We got to keep those remotes right here, I guess, for all of our.
Yeah.
Someone's in charge of remote control now. So. So, because everybody will submit that. Anyway, I think once we get used to those controls, uh we'll be in good shape. Playground at Godfrey. We have a meeting and I haven't sent it out to all the residents yet, but two of the residents picked a date for the follow-up meeting. We're gonna look at the four plans. We're gonna look at two things. We're gonna look at the four plans for the playground that these designers submitted. And then we're gonna look at the county drawings that we all looked at that workshop a couple of months ago about the road situation. Alright?
Yep.
Because um as Jeff um knows, in-informed us of yesterday was that the rentals are ready to transfer property. So we have a uh authorization for that. And then, so that issue is ready to be discussed. Okay?
Yep.
Alright, um highway bid comparison done. Uh reserve accounts, I pushed that into January. We'll talk about that in our agenda meeting, which is the third week of January. Um at this point, I would suggest we should go to our resolutions.
Yeah.
And uh Councilman Jolene, can you read number thirty-eight?
Sure can. Resolution number thirty-eight, twenty twenty-two, resolution approving purchase of new truck for highway department using highway reserve funds. Whereas the town of Unionville Highway Department needs a new truck, excuse me, a new pickup truck. And the highway superintendent, Ed Kating, would like to purchase a twenty twenty-two Ram crew cab four by four from Maine Motor Motor Car Company using the state bid process, bid number one-one-eight-six-six. And whereas the highway superintendent had previously obtained a quote from a dealer using New York State Office of General Services centralized contracts. But the twenty twenty-two fall delivery was canceled due to overwhelming demand for limited production. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Unionville hereby ratifies the previous motion accepting the new dealer's quote for a Ram twenty-five hundred and hereby end. And hereby end authorizes the town supervisor to transfer the full cost, approximately fifty-three thousand, one hundred and three dollars and fifty cents plus minor fees. As may be charged upon delivery from the highway reserve fund into the highway account to cover the purchase.
Alright, thank you, Councilman. Um may I have a roll call vote, please? You have a second?
A second.
Thank you. I will go, uh Councilman Jolene.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Okay, resolution thirty-eight, twenty twenty-two passes. Um at this point, um next up, Councilman Gussakoff, can you read resolution thirty-nine?
Sure. Whereas lifelong Hudson Valley resident Herb Rettel owns eight point nine five acres of vacant real property located on the intersection of North Cove Road and Route eighty-two. Identified as tax parcel number six-six-six-two dash zero-zero dash eight-five-six-nine-three-five. Whereas all of Herb Rettel's holdings are owned and managed by his daughters since Mr. Rettel's passing on January twenty-first of twenty twenty-two. Whereas Mr. Rettel's family has generously indicated that they would like to donate and form a foremost mentioned parcel to the town of Unionville as an unrestricted gift. Now therefore be it resolved, the town board of Unionville, after completing the typical title search and inspection, will gratefully accept this generous gift from the family of Herb Rettel with great pleasure and appreciation on the behalf of the residents of the town of Unionville. And the supervisors authorized to execute all documents reasonably necessary to complete this transaction and to disperse any funds required, recording and related fees. I'll start with that.
Alright, and any discussion? Any questions? Okay.
It's a great gesture.
Yeah.
Lovely gesture. And and uh we did review this similar resolution a few months in May.
Yep.
But um we never, we have to put in here that I'm authorized to sign the paperwork, which is now ready. So that's why we're doing this again.
Okay.
So, and I think the required funding, I think, uh we don't think Jeff's.
We just did the resolution.
The hundreds of dollars to record.
It's just recorded fees for the courts. Okay, great. So that's what we'll expect if we report back. Okay, um no discuss, no further discussion. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Aye. No. Aye.
Aye. Okay.
How free do we skip that? Remember, we decided that we're.
So in another meeting.
Tabling that for another meeting. Yeah.
Okay, so next up on our um list is the uh summary of transfers. Now you guys got this last week. At least we got, you got this in your email last week.
Yeah.
So we reviewed this at the work session. This is the exact same list and the same thing you got in the mail last week. But these are the uh budget transfers um that we do. We're gonna have some more after we settle the books and all the bills and stuff. And we'll do those in the first quarter. Um and so I may, depending on how. Laura, I mean, we may end up doing some in March when Danielle comes back or do it, depend on how that goes, how many we have. But anyway, um so these are all the normal ones. We went through all these accounts and budget lines. It's a why we were moving from this to that. Um and and this makes us, we're, you know, we're required to uh move it. And then it just goes into the general fund at the end of the year, you know, anything left over. So I would like a motion to please um. Move that the summary of transfers and donations for the December twenty-two, twenty-two board meeting. I'll make the motion that we approve the transfers for um. Bank transfers, budget transfers, budget amendments and uh donations received, which is on the back. That we approve all of the above. Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
All in favor of supporting that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope, okay. Motion carries. This will be done. And uh if you have any questions, let me know. But we've been eyeing that list for a month, so. It's good to get it all done. Alright, are there any other public comments on town issues? Yes, ma'am.
Um several meetings ago, we, no, I can't do that. Several meetings ago, we listed and I stopped trying, trying to write down. You should draw so fast. Uh I stopped listening at P and Q and I wrote this project. So I have a question now.
Or is this a Q and A? Are you making a comment on a town?
I'm making a comment.
Make a comment because it's twenty of ten, young lady.
Just, you know, stop talking. Is that ever coming back?
Um. You know, I don't know.
Think about it. Next, whatever happens with the annexation?
It's it's still in litigation.
You have a good time with this, Sebastian?
Take your notes.
Betsy, I make a motion to pay the bills.
Thank you. I. All in favor of paying the bills?
Aye.
Okay. And the last big piece of information that you gentlemen have is, I, this was just something that Ed and I were looking, wanted to look at on. Um the fuel usage for last year. Yeah, so I I did this for the annual. Now the December numbers in here, the usage are from last December.
Oh, clever.
Cause we don't know.
Yeah.
So that gives us a twelve-month usage. And um what we're gonna do with this is call some of our, like Crown, who's been a very good friend of us, and compare with, you know, how are they gonna price us this coming year? And then we're gonna call a couple others just to see that we're in the market.
Yeah.
And just make sure you've done some due diligence.
Mm-hmm.
Um and and then we do it as a whole town because we obviously, there's some savings there and.
Yeah.
And I I tell you, from a billing perspective, we much prefer that. So if we can keep looking company. So.
Yeah.
Anyway, now we have some data. We're gonna send them our quantities for each product.
Mm-hmm.
And ask over the phone or an email and then ask them to respond and. We'll let you know how that goes. Um we haven't changed in four years because we've had a great supplier and we've had good um luck. I checked these numbers with some of the indices at the same month and we were a little behind all the indices for the same time period. So I think we probably did okay this past year. Um but anyway, uh Ed and I talked about it. We think it's important that we do it. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. You know, I've talked about this before. I remember this topic. Yeah.
January.
I can't remember if there's, there's, yeah. It's gonna come back to me. But we had the discussion and then I talked to a few people. I don't remember what happened, but I'll look at it. Yeah. But it's something we have to stand top of. We do, you know, work with these people. They also service us. So they're very important. Well, that is about all we have on the agenda for tonight. Is everybody, does anybody have anything else they'd like to? I think not. Would you like to move that we close this meeting?
Someone.
Alright, thank you, everybody, for being here. Appreciate it.